All right. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, everybody. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today is April 23rd, 2024. This is a regular meeting for the Board of Supervisors for County of Lake. And we will begin this with a moment of silence. This app happened, I believe, on April 4th in the streets of Clear Lake. There's unfortunately a loss of life due to a criminal incident. Her name was Liz Williams. She was taken from us abruptly and made quite a huge hole in our community and an impact to her friends and her direct family. I don't want to provide more details because obviously there's an investigation going on, but this one hits home close to me for unfortunately both the victim and for the person that has been apprehended. But I do want to hold her family and friends in our thoughts and prayers today and hope that they can find good closure. Supervisor Green, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes. Let me begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Our next item is the addition of any extra items not posted on the agenda. Are there any extra items?
No items, Chair. Thank you.
All right. And anything from board members? All right. Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items a supervisor wishes to pull for further discussion? Seeing none, let's open it up for the public. Anyone from the public wish to pull a consent agenda item? I see no hands up in the Zoom room or the chamber, so I'll bring it back for the board to take action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve Agenda Items 5.1 through 5.21. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? And motion carries. We're gonna move on to our 9:02 a.m. item, public input. This is for any public expression on items not on our agenda today. Anyone wish to provide public comment? Please come on up.
Good morning. Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. Recently reported in a Mendocino County newspaper was the following story. On March 31st, there was a 20-year-old Ukiah woman riding an electric bank, or electric bike, on Sanford Ranch Road approaching Talmage. She failed to stop at the stop sign and went through an intersection at the same time that a 2000 Cadillac Escalade was coming in the opposite direction. There was a collision, and she sustained major injuries. The driver stayed at the scene, called 911, and the emergency responders showed up. But here's the rest of the story that wasn't in the newspaper. Our office Assistant III, Ruby Mitt, was attending an Easter egg hunt with her family that same day, that same location, and they heard the crash. Ruby ran out to the scene, ran directly to the crash victim, and was assessing her injuries and keeping her still. She was calming her and soothing her while her family directed traffic away from the scene. And she stayed with that woman until the emergency responders arrived. I mention this during public input because I want to give the supervisors every opportunity to express the pride that you have in your team. We don't just have public servants working for the county. We've got people who have hearts for the community and who respond. They're the helpers that we're always looking for in times of trouble. So thank you very much. She was really nervous, so I didn't make her come up right at the beginning, but Ruby, if you wouldn't mind joining me, that would be awesome. So I know that every day on a day-to-day level, we've got an amazing team in community development, but when people go above and beyond and actually show how heroic they are inside, it's a good thing to bring to you in the morning. Thank you. Did you want to say anything?
Thank you for that public comment. Yes, let's go ahead and do a group photo. Sorry, Ruby.
I'll sit here. I'll be here.
Thank you for that. Any further public comment from the board chamber or the Zoom room? Again, in the Zoom room, please use the raise hand function. All right. We do have somebody in the Zoom room, and Erin McCarick.
Hi there. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Chair. Sabatier. I am making a comment. It's a kind of follow-up to one that I made a couple weeks ago, inquiring about the equity grant extension and then also just trying to get more information for the equity grant, the cannabis equity grant through the State of California, the GoBiz Department. First, definitely want to say thank you. Thank you to everybody, obviously, as Mariaa just said, everyone who works at the county is stellar and always looking out to help other people. So I want to say thank you to Patrick Sullivan and the folks who ran it last year and the folks who are running it this year. But we're just trying to, there's a letter that went out to the county last week from the Lake County Cannabis Alliance, just asking for guidance and clarification and extension and just a response. So I'm bringing it to the Board, and I think that a lot of folks in the cannabis industry wrote to the Board as well, asking for a response to this letter. So just raising it to the Board's attention just to say we'd really like help in this because we're trying to work in partnership and ensure that that $800,000 doesn't get returned to the state and that folks who qualify for the equity grant are able to receive it. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Erin, let's go ahead and get in touch and continue the discussion afterwards. I see no further hands up in the Zoom room and nobody in the chamber, so let's go ahead and move on to our 9:03 a.m. item, Pet of the Week. Officer Murray.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Officer Murray with the Lake County Animal Care and Control. Today, I have with me Beau. He is a three-year-old Australian Shepherd mix, and he is very hyper. You would not think he was three. He's a very, very sweet boy. He loves everybody, everything, and I don't think his little nub on his foretail could go any quicker when he's excited. So if you would like to come down and meet Beau in person, you can come down to 4949 Hellbush Drive, and our phone number is 707-263-0278. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Officer Murray. And I noticed that he's probably panting from how tired he is from wagging. We're gonna move on to our 9:04 a.m. item, and I do not have, and I apologize, we're going to take that a little bit later, as soon as possible. I apologize. Actually, let's just take a quick one-minute break because I feel like we need Johanna in here to make sure we're on task. I apologize for that. If I can get that pen. Can I get that pen? Oh, it's there. So if we can get the Behavioral Health Team to come forward, please. Today, we have a proclamation designating April 2024 as Alcohol Awareness Month in Lake County. Whereas, the month of April is dedicated to increasing public awareness and understanding of alcoholism and misuse, its causes, effective treatment and recovery. And whereas excessive alcohol use and misuse impacts adults and youth of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, and that its consequences affect individuals, families, and communities. And whereas the entire community plays a vital role in supporting those struggling with alcohol misuse and addiction while promoting a culture of moderation and responsibility. And whereas education and prevention efforts are crucial in reducing the stigma surrounding alcohol use and misuse and encourage individuals to seek help when needed. And whereas, Lake County Behavioral Health Services provided DUI program services to 411 participants and assisted with 528 treatment service requests in the calendar year 2023. And whereas, in the state of California in 2022, an average of 15,443 annual deaths are attributable to excessive alcohol use, and 64.4% of those deaths are due to chronic causes such as alcohol use disorders. And whereas, the Board of Supervisors and Lake County Behavioral Health Substance Use Disorder Services urges all community members and organizations in Lake County to participate in activities and events aimed at educating themselves and others about the dangers of alcohol misuse and addiction and support initiatives that promote healthy lifestyles. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake with the Lake County Department of Behavioral Health Services do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Alcohol Awareness Month, and the County of Lake passed and adopted this April 23rd of 2024.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Amber Westphal. I am a Programs Manager with Behavioral Health Department. I oversee our Substance Use Disorder Services and Programs. Everything that I wanted to mention is outlined in this proclamation, but I do want to say that alcohol use and consumption is ingrained in our everyday lives and our society and everything that we do, and that's okay. Everybody has a choice to consume alcohol as you wish, but I think it's important to mention that when we do so, that we do so in moderation and being responsible and to help spread that message to our families, our friends, our children, our youth, and our loved ones, because although alcohol consumption is normalized and standard, there are large consequences associated with misuse and dependence, and we see that every day as well. The amount of DUI-involved accidents that harm people, fatalities, and the large consequences associated with dependence and how that fatally affects our body. Coming out of COVID, we're unwinding. We're seeing a lot more medical conditions associated with alcohol dependence, and we're seeing individuals younger and younger who are having severe medical conditions associated with that, such as cirrhosis of the liver and other medical conditions. So if you or someone you know, you care about, you love, are struggling with alcohol misuse and may need a little additional support or education, we have a large network of providers and a large network of people who really care about the community. You can reach out to our Department Behavioral Health Services or any other provider in the county to receive support and services. And if those providers cannot directly provide that type of support and services, they will link you to somebody who can. Thank you.
I don't know that you could say it any better than what Amber just said. We have a human responsibility not only to take care of ourselves, because once we take care of ourselves, we can take care of our communities. Things that we do have impact on others, place and time, place and time, place and time. I see it too often, from the streets of Clear Lake to the conferences that we go to, people are misusing alcohol at the wrong place at the wrong time, and I think we all need to be aware of our impacts to ourselves and to our families and our communities, and there's ways that we can get help when we lose that control. So thank you for being here. Thank you for supporting those that ask for the help, and please reach out.
Yeah, I'll just add, you know, those of us that are around kids and youth and teenagers, it's so important to model appropriate behavior and know that, and show that you don't always have to have alcohol to have a good time and to show that there is a lot more beyond that in life. So it's just, it's really important when you've got eyes on you that you may not be aware of, to really model that better behavior.
Thank you for that, Amber. I really appreciate what you said. I appreciate the department's work because, you know, one thing I have to say is when it comes to alcohol, it's important that people stop when it's controlling them or when it's having that effect and it's hurting family and people around them. But the most difficult part about being sober is the aftermath, when you have to be accountable and continue on and ride those waves of, you know, you want more, you want more cravings and whatnot. So the hardest part I know for me was to be accountable to the people that I hurt, you know, regardless of their family or friends, the things I've done and said, I had to go out to them and at least make amends. They may not have forgiven me, but at least you have to do that. I mean, that's a hard thing to do, but you know what? That's the work that gets done, and it's your department that helps them with that or gets them to the place they need to be, so I wanted to highlight that.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Item 6.4, 9:10 a.m., Presentation of the North Coast Opportunities Building Up Individuals in Local Development Build Program. Please come on up to these chairs. I'm not sure how long your presentation is, but let's get you comfortable, and I think we have a presentation to share as well. And did you want to start this off? Supervisor Pieska, please.
Well, thank you all for coming and giving this presentation. I think we're doing it annually now, but this is such, this is a small program, but it's having massive impacts on our community members and our community, and it's just been incredibly effective when you can just really devote so much time and energy and resources to a small group of people, and you watch these graduations and you watch people come through the program, and you know that you are experiencing generational change. And in a county like ours, it is incredibly worth it to put those resources into a program like this where we can see the outcomes go down through the generations. And I know we've got a graduate here today. I'm so glad you're here. So I just, this is such an exciting program. It was an investment that we made as a Board, and it brings me nothing but joy to get updates from your program.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the introduction, and thank you for the investment. We're excited to share all of the updates with the work that we have been able to do with these funds. And yes, thank you for acknowledging. We have Simon and we have Orell here, graduate and a current builder. And my name is Derek Fiedler. I'm the Program Manager of the Build Program. With me is Joseph, the Project Assistant, and Roseanne Ibata, the Director, Michael Willis, the Crew Coach. So I have the control to the slides. There we go. Yes, very good. Okay, so as I share some pictures, I'll just introduce the program for people that might not be aware of the program, as well as pick up some updates, because we did share a little over a year ago, and we have made some modifications and some improvements to the course design as well as to the populations we can serve. So Build is a career development program of North Coast Opportunities. North Coast Opportunities is the community action agency of both Mendocino and Lake Counties, been in service to our communities since 1968. The Build Program has been around since 2020, and we serve to build up individuals and local development in Lake County. We hire on crews of six trainees who work on projects that positively impact the community, specifically the built environment in Lake County, while the builders can gain hands-on quality work experience and professional skills. So who qualifies for Build? So for people that are interested, they would sign up with us through initially an application online through our website, ncoinc.org/built. You would need to be 18 and over, a Lake County resident, have some type of employment barrier, whether that's zero experience, or you've been Justice Involved, or you have some type of barrier that is holding you back from getting into a quality job and career. You also have to be motivated to make a difference in the community. We're a mission-driven working crew, and you have to have a career focus. A lot of people, they come to us and they think, oh, I just need a job, whatever I can do, because we are an earn-and-learn program, so we take some of these funds and we give it right to the participants that we hire on. And some people think, oh, it's just a job. I just need a job so desperately. But usually, our program's not a good fit for people in those circumstances if they're not career-focused, because either we really annoy them or we bore them. And so for people that are motivated and hungry for those opportunities, we're a great fit for them. And you have to be willing to complete at least 400 hours of on-the-job training within a four-month time period. We have served nine cohorts, or crews, as we call them. Each cohort is about the length of a semester for school, so we run a fall cohort and a spring cohort that run the duration of four months. So we serve two crews of six, so a total of 12 participants for our 101 foundational crew. Thank you. Thomas just woke in or walked in. Good to see you, Thomas, one of our graduates. And so we've served a diverse population from all sorts of different backgrounds. We've had members of local tribes. We've even worked on different tribal projects for housing. We have, some graduates even have ankle monitors from parole or probation as they graduate. So we're a second-chance program, sometimes a third, fourth, fifth chance program. We are a learning environment, so that way people that are motivated to turn the page and start a new chapter in life, we're the crew for them. We've had people with trauma. We've had people with homelessness, like living in a tent, coming to work, finding a way to get to work. We've also had a great opportunity for people that want to change the trajectory of their lives as well as their family tree. We've had three female graduates, and we are excited to serve Lake County residents from all sorts of different backgrounds. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our Project Assistant, Joseph, who's going to give you a quick snapshot of the timeline of what one of these cohorts looks like.
Thank you, Derek, and thank you to the Board. There is a lot of action that happens in this three-to-four-month period, so we have been trying to tighten down this design, and the possibilities have really opened up because of this documentation and these processes that we've learned. In the very beginning, the crew members are, even during the selection process, are learning some skills in their workshops. Prior to being selected, we still attend to about 10 to 12 candidates that are, we develop an alternate pool as well to try to get them into the Mendocino College that we partner with. So we have a workshop week going into the selection process that is really working on personal discovery, trying to awaken that purpose within someone to say, am I career-focused? Am I ready to make a difference in the community? Once we've identified those individuals, we take those six crew members and we really just pour everything we can into them, including belief, in case that's the only missing component. In the first week, we really focus on, of course, we have to get through the onboarding phase in the first couple of days, but we do our standard onboarding, and then in the afternoon, we're already jumping right into the Build-specific onboarding, where we're really going over the program and what we do. In the next few days, we talk about the schedule and how they need to get into that mindset of being ready to work, what it takes to work. Some people have been out of work for some time and need to have that reminder of behavioral habits or time card preparation, how to get to work on time and communicate. That's really important. Then we start to hand out their hand tools. They are basically given a little bit of assistance as they prepare to come to these meetings and get ready for work by getting their standard hand tools, and we go over basic training with them. And that pretty much takes the whole first week, is just getting their feet wet, getting them into the feel of construction trades and the habits of construction trades and working. The second week, we really dive into safety. One of the things that we really wanted to enforce and make it a safe learning environment, working with our insurance provider, because even though we do have the benefit of adding OSHA certifications to these crew members, which is usually something you have to be working for someone to receive, they don't get it until halfway through the semester. So we can't just hand brand-new, green construction workers power tools and say, good luck, don't hurt yourself. So we've worked with our insurance company, and we tie very close to manufacturer recommendations and OSHA regulations to make sure that these folks go in there with a safety mindset, that everything we're doing is looking out for each other, looking out for ourselves, because at the end of the day, we all want to come home with everything we started with. From there, we start doing some exercises. We have interactive flooring exercises that we do in our workshops. We go through every single power tool. We talk about its power source, the safety requirements for that, and making sure that they understand how to keep their eyes and ears open and how to use their personal protective equipment properly and to be prepared for anything that could happen, and look out for hazards as they walk in, because they do end up going on different job sites, and a lot of times, it's the first time in all of these different scenarios. So from there, they jump into a rotation, and we work with our wonderful contractor partners in the community. The list is growing, as you'll see in a few minutes here, and we get to have them try out all sorts of different trades. We've picked up some specialties like HVAC. We've picked up some specialties like glazing. These are things I'm kind of jealous, I didn't get to work in a program like this. This is pretty incredible that you get to show up and experience all of this in about three to four months to give them inspiration on what they might want to do. So we've got some examples here of some of the flooring that they started to put in, and really just have a great leader with Mike Willis out there, showing this crew what to do and making sure that they're being watched by either a representative on the construction sites, or he himself is watching part of the crew. And then they continue to do this. As they get closer to their graduation date, we start thinking about, what's a good fit for them? How are they doing? Do we need to start letting them stay at certain roles a little bit longer because it's a good fit? Because we're looking to place these individuals. Looking to give them a good start onto the right track for them and a good fit, and that's really a lot better than trying to rely on just a labor, you know, a labor company that's just giving you some temporary labor. We actually get to grow with them and learn about them and what drives them so that we can make a good fit with the contractors as well. And then here's an image of one of our more recent graduation ceremonies, which is very, very special. This is really where you see the culmination of this whole process, and it really can't be described. It's something that has to be experienced. I was able to witness the fall 2023 graduation, and that's when I really understood what happens. The amount of The amount of pride and growth that these individuals experience over the course of three to four months is really inspiring. And if you can make it to one of these graduations, I would really recommend it. So thank you for letting me share the timeline. And thank you, Derek.
Thank you, Joseph. Do want to also mention that we received 60 applications for our recent crew. So the course of doing all those interviews, the workshop week helped little it down to 10. And so really, like, it's a process that we've been refining over time. We have it down to where we know we have the best possible candidates to do the most quality work in our community. These are our outcomes for our builders. So since the beginning of the program in 2020, till our last completed crew, which was the end of last year, we've served 33 participants. Of those, 24 have graduated. And 22 have been placed or found employment either before or after graduation. And I also put together numbers to give a snapshot of the duration of this funding that the county has awarded us. So since September 2022, we have served 27 participants. And we have graduated 16. And we are on on track, because we're in the middle of a crew right now, to graduate 22. And we have employed 17. And we're projecting to to place 23. You might notice that that number is a little bit interesting. We have more graduates than employed. That's because one of the things that we do so well is placing people. And we've had a few early placements, early enough to where we could actually pull from our alternates and have not just the original six, but now we're serving nine for this this crew right here. So two of the three that had early, we let go of early was was due to placement because they found quality jobs already. So now we're just going to dive into detail, zoom into the work and the training that they do. So we partner with Mendocino College. Last year, we told you that we're really excited because they opened up their Intro to Construction course. Well, now they've opened up several courses, enough to where people can earn the Intro to Construction certificate right here in Lake County. They don't have to drive over the hill, out of the basin, somewhere else. They can get that education right here. And we're just thrilled to partner with them. And as we grow, they grow. We are also excited that they get the time to have lab. So this is a special time for the students to be able to develop their skills together. As mentioned, the certificate, so this is not just a class exclusive to the builders. This is a plug to everybody in Lake County. You can take this course. It's super affordable. It's a non-credit course. There's not going to be giant tests or anything. It's no pressure. Just come and learn. Bring your questions. A lot of times, people bring their remodel projects. They're like, help me figure this out. I don't know what to do. Come up with a plan. And we work through it together. A big part of our program's success is our workshop days, where we bring in professionals and outside agencies and our community partners. Like pictured is Don Smith giving his Purpose Workshop early in the program to help our builders identify who they are and what their purpose is and come up with career goals to meet that. We also do financial literacy and a number of other workshops that help develop the soft skills and the professional skills. This list is quickly growing exponentially, actually. So we have been able to find over time the best, what we believe are the best employers in the trades. Our lead or our primary partnership is with Bridges Construction. But we also have Danco. They're the ones that recently completed the 80-unit apartment complex near Safeway. The Carpet Man, Eli Andrews, Valley Glass, Right On Time Heating and Cooling, Pacific Builders, they're doing the, I think it's 40 units apartment complex that's near the Nice area. BLH Construction, they're in Kelseyville with a big project as well, I think 60 to 70 units. So again, our crew members get to work alongside the best workers from the best companies in Lake County. And as you can see, this is a big job site with a lot going on. There couldn't be a better exposure to high-level work from quality contractors and subcontractors. So there's a lot of eyes on them saying, hey, are they doing a good job? Do they have a good work ethic? Maybe I'll hire him. And here's a couple of pictures of the builders at work at Danco. And I just want to say, going back to this one, the opportunity here is that we've had three cohorts work on these units. These are 80 units in the county. And they're working on units that they could live into. In fact, one of our builders moved into one of these units. I'm not sure which one in the picture. He's living on the complex, in the complex. And their kids could live here. Their grandkids could live here. Like, these buildings would be here for 50 years or more. And so they're sewing into long-term built environment into the county. We also do community enrichment projects where we have time, an extra couple of days. For example, Adventist Warehouse Goods for People in Need, as well as the NCO Garden Project in Clear Lake in Middletown. These are great, simple construction projects, great hands-on experience, but it also enrichens the the community. We've also got a lot of requests for pergolas lately. I don't know, maybe you could see why. Another big thing that we do is our rehab program. So our crew gets out there and we partner with landlords who are partnering with other agencies who are housing individuals coming out of homelessness. And so our crew goes in there and does good work and brings the house back up to habitability for families that are desperately needing a good place to be and an affordable one. Here's some of our outcomes for our building project. We have 37 housing units that we have rehabbed or worked on in some way, six of which are transitional, 28 are rentals. Recently, we've been doing some owner occupied that Mr. Mike's going to be talking about. Those are for people that have lost their mobility, elderly folks who have a fixed income that are unable to, say, build ramps or stairs, or they've lost reliable or healthy access to their home. And so and they ran out of options. And so our team comes in there and we're able to build something in a way that they can regain access to their home, just to stay living in there. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mike.
Good morning. Once again, it's always a pleasure to come before you guys. Once again, it's a pleasure to come before you guys and share our successes of the Build program. The Build program is not like any other program. The Build program not only serves the community, but we give everything to this program from the time they're hired to the time they graduate. We interact with them, know them personally. And we try to provide for them all the necessary tools that they need once they graduate. I'm glad to be able to be their coach, their supervisor, their hands-on guy. I just want to share two houses we fixed up. It was two weeks before Christmas, two weeks before the team graduated. We had another project going. We had our crew on other job sites. But Derek received a call on the same day. Two senior citizens were in need. The first house was in Kelseyville. Lady's husband was in hospital. He was diagnosed with diabetes. And they were going to have to amputate his leg. She had no resources to do the work that was needed to put a handicap ramp in. She reached out to the Build program. And the Build program went to Kelseyville. We met her along with Bridges Construction. And we developed a plan to put in a handicap ramp for her. So when her husband came home, he had the ability to come in and out. We put a handicap ramp in. We put stairs in for her. We put bars in the shower for her husband to get in and out. Developed a good relationship with her. But that's what the Build program is doing. And that is what we try to keep doing. The other project was in Middletown. I liked this little lady. She's a senior citizen also. Unfortunately, she had a fire. She was in a wheelchair. She had to go to
Transitional living?
Transitional living. She wanted to get back in her house. Her house was a mess. She hired one contractor. He read off with her money. She hired another contractor. His work was bad and he read off. Some kind of way, they heard about the Build program. I wasn't there at first to see the house. Derek and Joe told me about it. I went there by myself. Remember, two weeks before Christmas, two weeks before graduation, with the first house in Kelseyville. And now we got a second house in Middletown. When I walked in there, I said, no way will we be able to do this. The house was cluttered. It was a mess. And came back to the office and we talked about it. Bridges agreed to help us put the flooring down. We was able to put plywood down on the floor, noon and low limbs throughout the house. She had blinds that needed to be put up. She had blankets over the windows. We were able to do that. Put a new toilet in. We even replaced the rear window. And when I seen her face, when she moved in signing the papers, final inspection, she was so delighted to just be back in there. Things like this is what drives the Build program. And we try to instill in our workers, our crew, the importance of doing a job, doing it right, being on time. Take pride in the work that you do. Because it will be noticed and you will be be noticed. I'm proud of all of our graduates. Everyone's not able to get a job. But but I keep trying to instill in them, the more you put in, the more you get out. The more you put in, a contractor will discover you. Just show up and do the work. Be dependable, be there. I'm not going to talk anymore because we have these graduates here. And I'm just so proud of Thomas. Where, where, where is the other one at? Simon. And Oral is still in the program. If you guys could just listen to them for a couple of minutes and they could tell you where they were before they came to the Build program, what they learned while they're in the Build program, and what opportunities and doors opened for them when they graduated. I appreciate it.
Yeah, so we probably have time for one. And then the others, if we have time for public comment, they can share a word. Thomas, why don't you come up and just share, just for a minute? Thanks, Roseanne. So maybe just, or yeah, what was life like before the Build program and then during and after?
Let's see.
Can you just state your name first?
My name's Thomas Vines. Hello, everybody. When I started off with NCO, I had three kids. We were in a small trailer and kind of just making ends meet as it was. And then we had a baby on the way. I was out of work. My wife was getting clients here and there, so that was what was keeping us going. We were on welfare and everything. Got the interview at NCO and it was, don't even remember really filling out the application, but it was online and then they called me in for the interview. And I was like, freaking heck, yeah, I get to do some, learn how to do construction more and get paid to do it. And then they got to go to the Mendocino College, got some. And then afterwards, I ended up taking a couple of college courses. Got my job with Danco. Got a three-bedroom, a three-bedroom house. Or it was a two-bedroom, and then I built my kids a third bedroom. Got ourselves a new car. Our third baby's getting big now, so she got plenty of room to run around. And then I get to come in every once in a while and inspire some confidence to the new graduates whenever I get a chance. And
How about when you were hired with Danco?
Oh, yeah, that that changed my whole, everything, you know? That's a huge company. They got probably 1,000, close to 1,000 employees. Send us on company retreats and paid time off, this and that, you know, all the medical, dental, 401K. And got more work than I know what to do with now. So that's pretty much where I'm at now. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thomas failed to to tell you guys that Danco liked him so much. He had his kids and his wife one vehicle. He needed another vehicle. They gave him money. They gave him money to purchase a car. He forgot to tell you that that's how much they appreciated him. Yeah.
I would love to hear from the other two since
Yes.
Now a good time, Bruno?
Yes, yes.
We have Simon Thornton.
Before Simon speak, we have so many applicants. And it's hard to choose six, three alternates out of 60. A lot of them have one or two barriers. Simon had the most barriers out of any applicants. But he hung in there. I'll let him tell you his story, but I'm just proud of him just hanging in there because it paid off for him.
Hello, my name is Simon Thornton. Actually, ironically, yeah, I did have a lot of barriers. And I still do, but I'm learning to navigate through them and around them. When I first applied for Build program, I was homeless. I was on parole. I was basically lost. I did 30, well, I was doing a sentence of 34 to life. Got it commuted down to, due to law changes, to time served. I'm currently still on parole. I have a GPS ankle monitor on. I never even thought I'd get out of prison. You know, I was sentenced away for the rest of my life. And all because I made the choice of hanging out with some older people that I barely knew and went for a ride I shouldn't have went for. But now I had a second chance at freedom and I didn't know what to do with it. I was lost, scared, confused. And because it was an emergency release from prison, I had no support system really in place. Got out, heard about Build. Actually, one of the few places that tried to help me was parole. And they were the ones that told me about Build. I went and applied. I was chosen. And thanks to that, I've gone from being homeless, living in a tent in the hills of Clear Lake Oaks, to I'm in a one-bedroom apartment, well, I guess you'd call it a cottage in Clear Lake. I have a car. I have a license for the first time in my life. I've never had a license or a car in my life. I'm 35 years old, so you've got to imagine how that feels. I managed to support myself well. I struggle at times still, but, you know, I'm not giving up. I went to the college. I managed to get almost everything I need to graduate with my Introduction to Construction certificate. I'm still attending courses. In fact, next month, I get my EMS 550, which is Introduction to In fact, next month, I get my EMS 550, which is Introduction to AED, which is the shock paddles, the CPR and Community First Aid. Upon receiving my certification in that, I will actually get my Introduction to Construction Trade certificate. Thanks to Derek, Joseph, Mr. Mike, this lady here, and Coach Gaddy, I've had a dramatic shift in my life. And it means a lot to me. I mean, no matter what, I owe more than I can ever say because I probably wouldn't be here otherwise. I was getting to that point where I was feeling like there was no other option but to do something stupid. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. You're the man. Next, we have Orel.
Hello, my name is Orel Gosman and I'm a current builder with the Build Program. I believe I'm the youngest on our current crew right now. I just turned twenty, April sixth. And for me, the Build Program has been an honest lifesaver. I, as a young person with very little experience and in a bit of a newer place, I'm a bit new to Lake County, I've felt quite lost at times. And the Build Program for me has been much more than a job or just a paycheck. It's been a family. Whether it's with Derek, Joseph, Mr. Mike, or my current crew, we are constantly building each other as well as the community and our projects. We function very much like a family. We all hold each other up at all times. Whenever someone falls down, whenever someone needs something, whenever someone doesn't have a ride, whenever someone doesn't have a lunch, we all support each other. I recently was in an accident, motorcycle accident, and I haven't always had a ride to work. I haven't always had a way to get to somewhere for lunch. And everyone that I have been working with in my crew has always helped and supported me, as I have with them when I did have a ride and they did not. Working with this community and in this community has been super, super important for me personally. I haven't always known where I wanted to be. And the work that we do is extremely important, in my opinion, because it goes so far with who we see in our everyday lives. The people who I work with, the people who I work for on the larger, the larger construction sites such as Nice and with Bridges are people that I see in the grocery store every day. They're people that I see in Library Park every day. And so it creates that tight community bond for me to feel accomplished and like I'm helping my community truly. As a, as a success, I feel extremely proud of the work that we've done so far with some small home construction that we've done, as well as the large projects. I've received tremendous feedback and gained a lot of confidence that I did not have coming into this and a lot of friends as well. And I feel like it has truly saved my life. Thank you.
Thank you, Orel. Appreciate it. All right.
Out of the first six we hired, we hired one of the young men. He now works for NCO. We had another crew member working for Pacific Builders. A little bit after the first month, Pacific Builders hired him. We currently have two or three other members of the crew. I'm pretty sure they're going to get work also. I'm just glad to have this job. I've had a lot of jobs in my life, but none like this one where I just give my, myself and the team and Justin and this fine lady here.
Roseanne.
Roseanne. I want to call you Anna. But we have a good team, a good family. If I had to wish for something else for this Build Program, and would ask the Board of Supervisors, it's a lot more jobs and opportunity up here in Clear Lake. We have, I just happened to write them down, but think about this. If we had a program that worked with the water company, PG&E, telephone company, Clear Lake Park Recreation Maintenance Departments, what if we had a little training program with all those programs? Those are jobs that these young men can get on when they're nineteen, twenty, twenty-one years old, move up the ladder and retire. They don't have to leave Lake County trying to find another job. The construction jobs are great and doing construction all my life, but sometimes construction is seasonal. So my challenge to you, Board of Supervisors, it'd be nice if we could find out a way to open some doors, more doors for these young men. I just thank you for just allowing us to have this done.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, so I just wanted to, that's a good segue. I wanted to update you on the horizon as far as the growth from last year to this year, much of which you've seen in the slides and their stories, but then also the horizon for the future. So we also were accepted, the Breaking Barriers to Employment Grant, it's a state grant, and it has been a great grant partner and combined with this one because they provide lots of resources, lots of connections with similar programs in workforce development. And they really love the Build Program. They love what we do. And so in Southern California, they hosted an in-person conference for the Breaking Barriers Grant. And we were invited as one of two programs to give a TED Talk or a TED-style talk and highlight the program. And so we got to share what we're doing here in Lake County with the whole state or other programs throughout the state. They chose the Lake County program to tell everybody the successes and to give them example of what can be done. I'm proud of that because I'm proud of Lake County. And so any chance that we get to spotlight what's being done with excellence in Lake County, I'm all for it. It was a privilege. And we also got to hire on Kayla, who joined me down south. She is a case manager, really a career coach. And this has been a game changer because she gets to do all of the follow-up calls, the meetings and sessions with the crew members for life skills, for career development, goal setting. It's just taking it to the next level as far as what we can provide these builders in addition to all of the skills they're learning in the field. Okay. So there's our contact information. And then I wanted to turn it over to Roseanne, who can give you an update on the financials.
Good morning, Chairs of ADA, members of the Board, Roseanne Ibarra, Director of Community Wellness for North Coast Opportunities. I want to do a time check, be respectful of your time because I'm not quite sure where we're at.
We're definitely behind schedule, but we wanted to hear you guys. I think this is an awesome presentation and I appreciate everyone's patience with us as we move things along. So do what you need.
Thank you, Chairs of ADA. I'm here to speak to you about the number. So thank you, deepest gratitude for the funding, the ARPA funding that the Board provided to our program. It was eight hundred thousand dollars from July 1st of 2022 through December of this year. In that time, so last fiscal year, you'll see that first column, we've spent one hundred and ninety-two thousand. The two columns in the light gray, which I'm not quite sure it's showing up here on your screen, but those are projected. So we're in the current fiscal year, 2324. I estimate that by the end of this fiscal year, we'll have spent three hundred ten thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And that would leave a balance of two hundred and ninety-seven, one hundred and thirty-one dollars that I project that we will be spending down. I know that our staff has been working with your staff regarding the reporting on how we're doing with the project and the funding. And there has been a shift that I wanted to bring forward to the Board. I know in the original agreement, there was a line item for construction costs that included ADU's, what is it, alternative accessory dwelling units, excuse me, and then also rental renovations. So those dollars have been redirected to cover the cohort time. So we do pay a wage to this, to our cohort members and then also for personnel costs. And then Derek can speak a little bit more on the creative way we've been able to fund the building materials. We've been able to find alternative ways to fund those items. But you'll see that dark gray column, that that's the original budget of eight hundred thousand and how the dollars were originally allocated. And on the far right, I just wanted to show an example of what the full cost is for the program, a yearly cost. So it's five hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars. So for this coming fiscal year, for 2425, I do, we are looking at a deficit, but internally we're working on addressing that. As Derek had mentioned, we have an existing grant right now that ends this month from the Foundation for California Community College District. That, there will be another cycle that's available that we fully intend to apply to. So we expect that that will help fill our need and then we're also looking at alternative options. So thank you very much and I'm open to any questions that you may have regarding that.
Thank you. Yeah, some of the other shifts that have taken place is, of course, we're in the, right now, our main track is construction. What we've been developing is turning this into a model that can be applied to different industries to meet other areas, you know, such as automotive, such as even the medical field, you know, it doesn't have to be trade-specific. Because as we do this work, we see that there's needs and there's gaps in connecting people with quality careers. And we want to be a program that can fill in those gaps and become an answer to some of these challenges that we're facing, not just in construction, but throughout the economy. The other thing is that with our construction program, there has been significant changes to construction. Of course, the prices of material, I just, I can't believe it, but one panel of a T-111 siding, exterior siding, was almost a hundred dollars. So it's very expensive. So we came up with creative solutions to create a frugal program to most efficiently and honorably use these funds. So what we did, we redesigned our construction assistance programs with landlords to where landlords pay for the materials and we cover all of the labor costs for our team as well as the contractors or subcontractors. And that has been a great cost savings for both the landlord. It didn't slow down at all, like they're still equally excited to work with us because the labor piece is typically a cost savings of two to three times over the materials. So that's one way that we were able to adapt. The other is that we initially, we initially planned to do an ADU project when we applied for this grant. And then once we looked into it together with the county, we realized that it was, we could only really build two units with the money. And we felt like that was not really the mission for us or for the, seemingly the attention for this grant and where the county wanted to invest their dollars. And so we've been able to continue with this rental assistance program for people coming out of homelessness. But then we've also wanted to honor some of the requests from our first meeting. I know Moke and others said, well, are you guys going to be serving the elderly? Are you going to be helping people on low and fixed incomes? And so recently, we've had a flood of referrals, I believe, because, how about at Free Humanity, they're not able to run a part of their program. And so we've been getting perhaps some of their referrals or word got out. In any case, you can see that we've been serving people on fixed incomes, elderly, people with no other options, the ramp projects, they're very simple projects. We can serve more people. And I feel like the impact is equal because if they lose access to their house, that's as good as losing a house or losing a housing opportunity. And so for us, we can go in there and do simple construction program, which is a perfect fit for a beginner program to gain those skills and then regain access to a house in Lake County. So that's been the shift. We also want to be mindful of, as changes happen, we want to be able to talk about these changes so that way expectations are set and, you know, all parties are, can be on the same page with how to best serve this community with the funds that are at hand. The other horizons for this program is that are the apprenticeship or short-term internship piece that we do. Originally, that was just to help, you know, fill in some of those rainy days, but that has grown exponentially to where we're forecasting that we can create a separate track specifically or distinguish that piece of the program to be able to facilitate the apprenticeship piece as well as have a work crew because sometimes those two things can compete with one another within the same program. So I think a redesign would make the best of both. Another area that we want to explore is the entrepreneurial aspect, so actually building things and selling things. So building small sheds, building, could be custom dog houses, playhouses, benches, picnic tables, any of those like simple construction pieces. And selling that, so that way there could be a track just for that. We also want to create a 201 program. So in addition to the 101 program, we could keep them longer in the nest of the Build Program, so to speak. So instead of just a four-month maximum, now we're talking another six months to a year and a half where they get more benefits, more hours, more specialized skill and development. And so right now, we're looking in heating and cooling HVAC units, but we're looking at other specialty skills as well to where our whole program, if people stick with multiple phases, could be with us for up to two years. And then they could take that experience and have that go towards a contractor license or be able to have, you know, supervisor or not just enter into labor level at the low end, but be able to enter into mid-level for their employment with another company. Okay, I feel like that is enough time. I know you guys have other things, the agenda, and perhaps any other questions?
I believe Supervisor Paeska is ready.
I so appreciate this presentation. And whenever I go to one of the graduations, these stories stay with me for a long time and I'm glad that you brought some of them up today to share because they're really impactful. One of the things that always resonates with me and I hear over and over from the graduates is how, how, how hard they're pushed through the program. This is not an easy program and there's no handouts or gifts. They have to work very, very hard. They have to dig deep and they're learning the skills of resiliency and work ethic and just the recognition that they can do hard things and they can believe in themselves. And those are the things that don't ever really go away. Once you're taught that and you've learned that, and it seems like some of these graduates have never had those lessons in their lives. And so they're getting it for the first time as adults. And sometimes it's hard to learn those things. And I know, Mike, you've touched on that during graduation speeches. That they have to really devote themselves and devote themselves to each other. And I remember, I know some of the graduates outside of this and watching them grow and grow into the people that they've always wanted to be is just so important. And I, and I know they're not going back. They are going to new places in their lives that they wouldn't have been able to do before. And I think that is the ultimate investment. I love that we're getting the seniors back in their homes and the stories of those two seniors right before Christmas. We've got a lot of old homes in our county. And this happens to seniors. When they live in old homes, they start to crumble around them. They don't have the resources to fix them up and to do simple things. And so that little bit of investment from your team pays dividends down the road so they can stay in their homes. And we don't have dilapidated homes and we don't have red-tagged homes with squatters and we don't go down that spiral where we have to have code enforcement come and do the cleanups. And that's a much bigger investment. It's a lot easier to solve these problems upstream. So I really appreciate this holistic approach and that all of you are so dedicated and invested in these students and the program, but then now we're hearing it from the graduates that they want to continue to invest in their communities. So thank you for all of this. I encourage everyone to come to a graduation. It will change your life. It really, really will. This is just such an important investment. It means the world to me that you are, all are out on the front lines doing this work for us.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from board members? Please.
What a great investment. You know, when this first came to us as a program through the ARPA committee, great work, you know, looking at the opportunity to look forward, outcomes. And we had them testified right here today. So those are great things that are happening. Obviously, like I said, it was a vision that came to the board through the ARPA program and just glad that we funded it and were able to do that at that time. And hopefully, we'll be able to continue to grow. Hopefully, what's been done through the program will also help you guys look at some workforce development grants and other things. I know this board is committed to continue to look to build those workforce opportunities. So if there's any grants that you guys are going for, I know that we do support letters, move forward with that. I know there's other conversations going on, but just want to make sure that we continue the growth. Appreciate your challenge. You know, here as a board, you're always trying to get that workforce development for the folks that just aren't gonna, you know, maybe go on and, you know, take that next step and go to college and do all those other things. They just want to go to work to support their family and to be, you know, felt like, hey, I'm part of the community. I heard that great testifying today at the Diaz era, but the comments there and just what a great program. So obviously have support. We just got to figure out how we're going to continue this partnership with the NCO. And we do always have a good one. So thank you very much. Appreciate you guys getting up and speaking. Public speaking isn't easy to do and especially, you know, when you have challenges and other things. So thank you for doing what you're doing. Continue working hard and I know the program's going to continue supporting you. So good job, you guys. Good job, NCO.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Quick question. I see the emphasis was mainly on residential and I didn't know if you covered this in the presentation. I apologize if you did. Are you limited in your scope of work right now solely to residential properties? And the reason I ask is just as some of our seniors are struggling, some of our nonprofit agencies are struggling and they happen to have deferred maintenance needs in the buildings they have. I'm thinking of senior centers. I have a nonprofit in town that has some deferred maintenance needs. So do you have the ability under your current scope of work to provide services to nonprofit agencies that may have some building needs in addition to the residential work you're already doing?
Yeah, that's a fantastic question. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Currently, no. Right now, our outcomes are more on the residential side. However, we've had a few requests for other areas, like for transitional living. So you saw that's, we have helped out with that in the past. We thought, we're kind of entering the gray a little bit because it wasn't more of like the landlord relationship or homeowner relationship. But we've been approached recently by other transitional living facilities asking for assistance because either they don't have the funds to or their grants won't cover a certain part of the upkeep that needs to obviously happen in order to run a good program like that. So the answer is that we see the need as well and we want to come up with a way where our crew can go to work. I, we'll ask a follow-up question is, do you see any issues with the nature of the arrangement with the ARPA funds to be able to make an adjustment to where we could have our crew go work on some of the, the properties that you have in mind?
And then I'd like to jump in here to Supervisor Green. Thank you so much for that question. I think as we continue to explore the expansion of this program and what we want to do and what's in the future state of, of the build program, I think that's an excellent thing. So thank you so much for bringing that forward because our focus has been housing, but you're absolutely right that there's nonprofits that also could use this kind of support. So I think we can put that on the list of things for us to explore. Thank you.
And I think there's always an opportunity to bring back possible amendments to the agreement to see if that's something that can make sure that it's in, not in the gray, but within the letter of the agreement that we have, if there's opportunities out there and you wish to come back to us to see if that's a possibility.
Yeah, I just wanted to say great presentation. I like presentations like this. They're, they're showing the, you know, the work that you've put in and all of the gentlemen, whether they're young or old, you know, good work. Way, way to dig yourself out, stay committed and do what you have to. I like the pivot that you all make in certain situations with regard to the, the cost of the materials and then working with the owners or the renters or whoever to pay for that. That, that gives you a chance to still get the experience and work on the things that they need to get experience on as well. So, I mean, there's all sorts of different options and you all seem to have the capability to pivot in any way to make things work and get these folks what they need to, you know, develop in life. So, so yeah, no, thank you for this presentation and I'm willing to discuss anything any further than we have to make sure we can do a weekend to help you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for the presentation. Definitely enjoyed being at a graduation. It was heartfelt. I knew some of the folks that were graduating as well. The stories are outstanding, amazing. Gentlemen, thank you very much for showing up today and giving your testimony to what this program can do, not just for you, but for others. Just know that opportunities are always evolving and evolution never stops. And so keep opening those doors because obviously we've helped you through this program. They've helped you through this program to open some doors, but never hesitate to keep opening more because you have, opportunities are bound for you. I think you have an amazing team, obviously a caring team. You seem to have quite the relationship with the folks that you are educating and priming for careers. That's not something that I think is the usual business of what we see here. So I think you guys have made a great team. And Mr. Mike, I, I haven't seen you in action, but I could tell from your persona that you're part of this reason that this is actually absolutely successful. So I appreciate what you bring to the board. You're hanging out with these gentlemen and these women and, and teaching them the trades and giving them those, those life lessons, not just those hammer lessons. So I, I want to continue the conversation. I appreciate the financial side of it too. Thank you so much for letting us know where you are and, and where things might be in the near future. And I'm open for conversations. And Supervisor Pyska, thank you for bringing this and putting it on the agenda. Thank you so much.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I think you did public comment.
Oh, yes, I skipped public comment. Please come on up.
I'll, I'll make this quick. I just, my name's Joe Cooper. I recently accepted the position as Construction Project Manager in Public Works Department. I found out about the build program from a flyer at Kelseyville Lumber. I took a picture of it. I brought it home, thinking that it would be an opportunity for me to get involved in the community further. I grew up here. That a program like this would have affected change in my life at 18, 20 years old. Long story short, my son actually saw the flyer, applied for the program, was accepted and is going to be graduating, or else my son. I want to say thank you to you guys for giving him the platform to make a positive effective change in his life. And I'm so proud of him for taking that opportunity as well. And then to alert you to the fact that there's, there's three open advertised positions now that I think would fit the program really well. Some of them are extra help and perhaps there's a liaison between the build program and the county that can, can fulfill that. I've also had just a brief conversation about the program with the public services as well. And they're open to some sort of mentorship. I don't know the logistics or how that all works to start to develop those things, but I'm definitely on board and I'm definitely willing to contribute in whatever way I can. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate you all.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any other public member that wishes to speak? I see no hands in Zoom and no further hands in the chamber. So I'll bring it back to the board and I think we've said our piece. Any last words before we close this up?
When's the graduation? It's in May and the location and?
Yeah, invitations will be sent out. It's the, yeah, last week in May. We are going to move it to a facility in Lower Lake that gives us twice the amount of seating capacity. So fortunately, it's not a public graduation, so I can't give out the details just a second.
Right.
But the calendar invite will be sent out to emails for invitees and also the flyer can be distributed as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Keep up the good work.
I'll see you all there.
So I know we're a little bit behind schedule, but because of the next item, I want to make sure, for staff's sake, let's take a five-minute break and then let's take a 10-minute break and we'll start at 10:30. And thank you again for your patience. All right, let's reconvene and continue on our agenda. Again, thank you for your patience. We are going to take up item 6.5, 9:30 a.m., public hearing, consideration of appeal, AB 2401 of Planning Commission's denial of major use permit, UP 20-40, higher ground farms. John Oliver is the applicant and appellant. Location is 3545 Finley East Road, Kelseyville, APN 008026-07. And this has been continued from March 12th, 2024. I'm going to check in with County Council, Mr. Guintivano. We're going to start with community development to provide the facts of the project, open it up for the appellant to provide his testimony. And then at this moment, we do not have, the appellant is not, is also the applicant. So at that point, we would open it up for public comments and provide all three minutes so that we can make sure to get all the testimony for the public. I want to make sure we have to go through the oath process now before we get started. Okay, so let's go ahead and whoever wishes to speak, both in Zoom, if we can, sorry to ask to unshare the screen so we can make sure and get everybody that we need from Zoom. If you are on Zoom and you wish to provide testimony, if you're in the audience, please go ahead and stand and take the oath. And Johanna will provide that. I don't see any hands on Zoom. Let's go ahead and unmute her so we can hear her I do officially.
All right. With your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you.
Director Turner.
Thank you. Miraya Turner, Community Development Director. This appeal that you have before you today was continued from a previous board meeting due to the unavailability of the appellant. And so we do thank the board for granting the continuance so that we could all be present today. I will turn this over to Principal Plander, Michelle Iris, to present the staff memo.
Good morning. Thank you, Director Turner. Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. Let me share my screen. It's not letting me progress. Click it. Thank you. So jumping right in here, I'll give an overview. This slide contains a vicinity map of the parcel and project area. As noted, it's located at 3545 Finley East Road in Kelseyville. And the parcel was previously used and historically used for walnut orchards, hemp cultivation that was permitted, as well as hay production. The project area is highlighted in the yellow square or rectangle. And just wanted to point out the adjacent Kelsey Creek Schoolhouse Building, which I will get a little bit more into in a moment here, is located where the white arrow is adjacent. That building is, and site are owned by the Kelseyville Unified School District and currently leased by Laura. This slide points out a couple other uses existing on site, included some shop buildings, the proposed cultivation area, as well as, you cannot see it on this aerial, but there is an existing foundation for the proposed manufacturing building that was permitted as part of the previous hemp cultivation. The zoning is agricultural waterway, floodway, fringe zoning districts with a general plan designation of agriculture. And the supervisory districts are actually split on this parcel between four and five. The project is located in a mapped farmland protection zone, which allows cannabis cultivation with a major use permit inside of greenhouses with air filtration systems as proposed by the applicant. The site is accessed via two internal driveways from East Finley Road. There's a western shared driveway, sort of near where the, the yellow, the yellow boxes identify in the Kelsey Creek Schoolhouse Building. You'll see it to the right there. That's the shared driveway between the two parcels. And there's another to the right going to the existing shop buildings that the applicant is proposing to use. Now that we've oriented you all to the site a little bit, we'll give an overview of the proposed project. This is the current site plan that is proposed. It proposes a type, A-type 3B license for 22,000 square feet of mixed light within greenhouses of cannabis canopy. That would be 10 total greenhouses, eight for mature plants and two for immature, as well as the processing building I previously described that has the existing foundation on site, as well as ancillary facilities such as security fencing, driveway improvements, water tanks. There is an existing well on site to provide the water source, as well as two 5,000 gallon water tanks proposed for fire suppression. Also wanted to note that in the Planning Commission staff report, there was mention of cargo shipping containers, but those were not included on the site plans and also not analyzed within the project. So those are not included in the project if the board were to ultimately approve the project today. Yes, thank you, Director Turner. She was reminding me of these modifications. So on this slide, in January, the applicant verbally agreed to the noted project changes, modifications. I know it's a very texty slide, but I wanted to make sure these were all accurately categorized here. So we received comments from the Lucerne Area Revitalization Association, or LAURA, who, as I said, leases the facility next door to the project. And in an effort to work with the, Laura, the applicant agreed to the following changes, including moving the cultivation area 200 feet back from the schoolhouse to be a total of a minimum of 500 feet from the existing building, planting additional screening trees in between both the manufacturing processing facility as well as the cultivation site to add additional screening, using that interior second driveway on the right-hand side to be further away from the schoolhouse and not utilize that same driveway to lessen impacts to them. And limiting the height of the processing building to 25 feet, six inches. That includes the existing three-foot elevation grade change due to it being in a flood zone. And then lastly, the applicant is also required to provide updated site plans showing those relocated components of the project, proof of live scan confirmation and letters from the biologists and archaeologists related to relocating those portions of the project. That was something that was described and, and discussed at the Planning Commission and a condition of approval was added to ensure that all of the associated impacts potentially with those new relocated facilities are covered under CEQA. And all of those requirements and project modifications have been included as conditions of approval for the project at the Planning Commission hearing. As I mentioned, this project was, went to the Planning Commission on January 11th and was ultimately denied based on a number of issues that were discussed or raised by the commission. Staff has summarized them into five points on the slide and also discussed further throughout the board. into five points on this slide and also discussed further throughout the board memo dated for today's hearing, those being that the location is not consistent with the neighborhood character, the project would alter the view sheds of Findley East Road and views of Mount Canuckti, which is considered sacred to culturally affiliated tribes, proximity to adjacent farm labor quarters residences, impacts to Kelsey Creek, and proximity to a school. And I will go through each of these now. So staff conducted an analysis of these points. I should also back up a second and say that the applicant or appellant provided an application of an appeal and stated that the reasons for the appeal was that the project met all of the code requirements. So staff took that information, as well as information provided at the Planning Commission hearing, and conducted an analysis based on the code requirements at the county and state level. This slide outlines some bullet points related to each of those issues raised by the commission and staff's analysis. So related to the neighborhood character, the site has been historically used and surrounded by agricultural uses and agricultural structures such as greenhouses. There's the packing sheds across the street there. The use is allowed inside of greenhouses within the ag zoning district, and it's not located within a cannabis exclusion zone, and also meets all of the setbacks and regulatory requirements throughout our zoning articles and state regulations. Related to the view sheds, view sheds were analyzed in the initial study for the project in the aesthetics section. One of the reasons for adding the greenhouses is to protect some of those view sheds. As you all know, in our prime ag lands, our zoning code actually allows the structure, the proposed processing facility, to be up to 50 feet tall, and the project would be 25 feet and some change, so it's below the allowable height. And as I noted before, the cultivation areas and additional screening are proposed as a part of the project to help alleviate potential concerns related to visual resources. Related to tribal cultural resources, EB 52 notifications were sent out for the project following our procedures in our department for CEQA and processing the major use permit. We did not receive a request for consultation. However, we did include mitigation measures related to unanticipated discoveries for cultural and tribal cultural resources, and those impacts were found to be less than significant with mitigation within the initial study. And lastly, related to the adjacent residences, which are farm labor quarters, the code requires 200 feet setback from the cultivation area, and in this case, the project would be a minimum of 500 to 600 feet from the cultivation area. Moving along here to the fourth point, impacts to Kelsey Creek. The creek is located on the right-hand side of the parcel. It actually is included within the parcel. The parcel lines go all the way over to the creek. However, it's approximately 725 feet or so from the cultivation area and the proposed facilities, and there's also East Findley Road or Findley Road East bisects the parcel and the creek. So there's a bit of distance there. The project also includes best management practices and is required to enroll in the state water board permitting program, which further regulates impacts to water quality. Lastly, I'll say that biological resources, including impacts to the creek and associated riparian habitat, were included in the initial study and found to be less than significant. And our last point, proximity to a school, as I noted, in the bottom right-hand side of the slide shows the existing Kelsey Creek Schoolhouse Building, which was relocated to the site several years ago, and is currently leased by LARA for maintenance and improvements, but does not meet the definition of a school. I've put it up on the slide. I won't read it word for word, but essentially, in our code, a school is defined as a facility providing instruction to any grades K through 12, which education is primarily conducted. And in this case, the schoolhouse building is not being utilized as a school, and further, the ag zoning district does not allow or permit schools within that district. LARA has been in contact with Community Development Department related to proposed improvements they would like to make in the future, but we have not received a permit application for such uses to date. And with that, staff has analyzed the project for compliance with required setbacks and other zoning code regulations, as well as the state requirements for cannabis use permits, and finds that the project is consistent with all of the aforementioned, and recommends the board uphold the appeal reversing the Planning Commission's denial of the project, and it proved the use permit in initial study. And there are findings included in the packet for you all to consider, as well as those revised conditions in Exhibit E. Happy to take any questions, and the applicant-appellant are also here, as well as the property owner.
If I could also just add one small detail. The proof of live scan confirmation is actually, as it's stated in the conditions, the draft conditions, is the applicant must have approval following the review of that live scan by the sheriff's office. So they're actually needing, they need to pass the background check, not just submit proof of submitting an application for a background check.
Thank you for that. Any questions? Or keep going. Questions later? All right. We have the appellant in the room. Would you like to come up to the microphone and provide testimony?
I'm sure. Hi. My name is John Oliver. Thank you for the opportunity to hear our case and to give me the opportunity to speak today. You know, when we first started on this whole journey, we really wanted to find a location that was really well-suited for this. You know, we searched quite a lot, and when we came upon this opportunity, you know, being in an agricultural zone seemed, you know, like the fitting place for this sort of activity. So one of our primary concerns, obviously, when we first came to the property, even before, long before we purchased it, was the schoolhouse. You know, that was number one question, because, you know, we wanted to make sure that wasn't going to be a problem or that it wasn't going to infringe upon our ability to get a permit or bother the community in any way, you know. So we spoke to the neighbor, John David. We went to the assessor's office. I spoke with them directly to find out who owned the building. And at that time, I was under the understanding that it was owned by, the neighbor had donated the property, and now it was owned by the county, and then I was told that there were plans to move the schoolhouse. And I spoke to some folks at the Planning Commission. They told me that it had gone through quite a long period of them trying to figure out how to move it, and that it just wasn't, they hadn't found a way yet. So, you know, we had assurance that that was going to be the case, and that was the only reason why we moved forward with that, you know. And, you know, honestly, you know, this has been a four-year-long process that has been, you know, just with the COVID and all the turnover at the Planning Division, it's just been an amazing amount of turmoil and really challenging just even to get to this point, you know. And so we just want an opportunity to be part of the community, to contribute, you know, to the legal market. You know, I'm someone who's been part of this movement for my entire adult life. You know, I'm not some outsider with big money trying to come in here and just tax the community and not give back and not be part of it. And so with that, now that the schoolhouse has become quite an issue, I'm more than happy to do whatever is necessary in terms of making it work and making it agreeable for everyone, because obviously, it's a large parcel. You know, we could possibly move to the other end of the parcel. There's any number of ways that I think we could mitigate the issue, you know. And again, we're not here trying to do anything other than contribute to the community and to the legal market. So whatever we can do to appease our neighbors and to make this work for everyone, we're very open to. So thanks for this opportunity. Thank you for this day, and I hope you'll give us some good consideration on this.
Thank you very much for your comments. I just know that we may have questions for you when we get to the question part from the board, and so please be available for any answers.
Sure.
Thank you. And so with that, do you guys want to have a conversation, or do you want to hear from the public first?
Go ahead.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. If you did not raise your hand to swear in, please just let us know. We'll make that happen. I want to make sure we hear from everybody today.
I'm Elizabeth Larson. I'm with LARA. I hope you've had an opportunity to read the letters that we submitted to you, including the March 7 letter that goes point by point through this, in response to the staff report. First off, the school was not located to the parcel several years ago, unless by several years ago, you mean 1882. It's an 1871 structure. It's 153 years old. It's been sitting there for like 142 years. So that's the first thing. I also want to, I'm really, really frustrated with having to continually correct statements by the planning staff about what we've been doing. We haven't pulled permits because we haven't needed to. We've had lead paint remediation. We've been doing cleanup. We've been doing window repair. And I've checked with all the agencies that might permit. They said you don't need those things. So that's why. That's why we haven't pulled permits. And frankly, we told them earlier this year, do we need to go ahead and pull the trigger on the use permit process? And we were told it wouldn't matter, because there's no setback requirements from cannabis from event centers or the type of stuff we want to do. Also, in the last few days, we've had legal analysis by an experienced attorney who said that this business about, you can't have a school in an ag area. Well, it's a school-owned property, and the school district has latitude to do things outside of normal zoning. So that's something we need to look into as well. So you'll have to forgive me, because I'm very frustrated by having to continually defend ourselves against false statements about the property and about what we're doing with it. Now, regarding Mr. Oliver's timeline about the building was going to be moved, he bought this property, I believe, in 2020. By 2018, we were already in an application process with the school district for the school. So there was no, the other group did want to move it. They backed out of it, because it was going to be astronomically expensive. It was going to potentially damage the building. And frankly, we are now in the process of applying for National Historic Register status for it. If you move it, that's over with. So I don't know who was telling him that they were going to move it or that that was an issue, and whoever did gave him the wrong information. So as far as a number of the other points, and I'm not going to have time in three minutes, but there's issues, we have concerns about the issues with air filtration. Greenhouses and hoop houses aren't airtight, and you can't ensure that they will be airtight, and you can't ensure that the filtration system will work. I'm deeply concerned that a project that is this bad on paper can't possibly be good in reality, and I have no confidence that the Planning Department will actually enforce what's going on if there are problems down the road. You know, I just don't, I don't see that happening. It has been too long. I've had too much pushback, and there's been too many issues. I hope you did have a chance to read the letters we submitted, because they go into all of this point by point, and I knew I wasn't going to have time this morning. Thank you.
And when we're done with all public comment, if there's repeats to have to continue, please take advantage of that. I just want to make sure that we stay within our timeframe as well. Any other public comment? Please come on up.
Good morning. My name's John Warhead, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I live in Big Valley, private citizen. I'm against this project for a number of reasons that have already been enumerated. But a couple of points that I would make is that Planning Commission came out against it, and two, regardless of what's said, you've got the press release and then reality. And where I live in Big Valley, we had a grow, passed a letter to law, and we had more trespassers on our property in the last, in the two years that project was underway than we've had in decades. And this was for a CBD grow. It was not smokable marijuana. The guy had signs up all over the place. There isn't a buzz and a bail, and we were overrun with trespassing crime. The sheriff's department is very short-staffed. You guys know that. That's been a chronic issue for a long time. How long will it take them to respond to the issue of trespassing? They don't. They can't. They don't have the manpower. This is an attractant for crime. There's no, it's not, it's not a zero thing. It will increase. So there's that. I would ask what Mr. Oliver's bona fides are. How many of these projects has he done before successfully? What was the impact of those? We're talking about four and a half, five acres of marijuana growing. As for air filtration and mitigation of odor, have you driven on Government Avenue in Upper Lake in October? Oh, my goodness. It smells like the square in Arcata. You can't mitigate. The odor is unmistakable. So you have four pictures of Mount Canuckti on your walls. You don't have four pictures of Mount Canuckti with acres of grow in front of them. And do we really, I understand it's ag, and I understand that, but do we really want to promote intoxicants rather than food? Food feeds people. Intoxicants dull people to what's going on. My personal view, my opinions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the room wish to speak? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Helen Owen, and thank you for having us. And I'm going to concur with the last couple of statements, and I'm going to support what our planning department has their vision for it, that they weren't for it. And I think that we need to think hard and fast before we put something like this next to schoolhouse or next to where the children are going to be. And I know that there's something coming up in the future for that, and that's maybe a place that they should have maybe talked to before, is talking to the neighbors directly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Rose Davidson. I'm with the Lake County Genealogical Society. I'm newly appointed as of last week with a heritage commission, and I'm also a Big Valley gal. I love the schoolhouse. I love the fact that the mountain is in the background. I recently attended a funeral for Ray Moston, who was a former District 5 supervisor, and he worked countless years to conserve and restore the schoolhouse. He was also a Big Valley guy. As a genealogist and a historian, I look at Lake County's past, and I see instances where the board of supervisors have made some bad choices for the future, like selling away our water rights. I want you to consider the future, the generations that are behind you, that are going to be affected by your decision. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Please come on up.
Good morning, and thank you. I'm speaking opposition to the project and in support of your planning commissioners. Your planning commissioners were selected by you for particular reasons, and for whatever reason, the Development Department seeks to overturn that. Unfortunately, in their appeal, they've presented no new evidence, and that's the crux of an appeal is the new evidence. So there's really no appeal going on here today, is there? This is just the Planning Department trying to ramrod this project through. Where's the evidence?
Thank you very much for your comment. Anybody else in the board chambers? I see no hands in the Zoom room. I see no hands in the Zoom room. And there it is, Donna McWitt. We'll get to you in a second, sir.
Good morning, Board. Donna McWitt, Red Bud Audubon Society. We respect the planning commission's decision, and noting the mitigations recommended if the project is approved, we reached out to Mike Jones, our UC Cooperative Extension Forest Advisor in Lake Mendocino and Sonoma Counties about using the recommended spruce around the cannabis grow area and screen buffer to the schoolhouse. His reply was, and I quote, "It's probably not a good choice. It's possible, but with irrigation and proper maintenance, planted trees may grow well for a while, but given the climate in Kelseyville, it's likely it would eventually become stressed and start to decline. There's a reason most of our native tree species are slow-growing. Additionally, using bushy and relatively fast-growing species as viewshed barriers, spruce, arborvitae, cypress, can become fire hazards without proper maintenance," end quote. "We're not sure who the staff is that supplies the mitigation comments, but it's important to present scientific facts. It would be beneficial to train staff on native plants and trees and offer only recommendations of the right species for the health and safety of Lake County's future. Another example is plantings of oleanders, a non-native species. In the USDA Department of Forestry states, inhalation of smoke from a burning oleander can cause poisoning. All parts of the plant are extremely poisonous, containing 10 different cardiac glycosides. These compounds induce cardiac arrhythmia and eventually death. Thank you kindly for taking my comments."
Thank you for your comment. Nora Dalbaca?
Did she swear in?
Oh, did you swear in?
I did not.
I don't believe we had your hand up. If it's possible to swear you in, then we'd love to hear your testimony.
I would for staff to swear in, or I just swear to tell the truth.
All right. With your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Hi, Nora Dalbaca. I am the current president of the Lake County Cannabis Alliance, and I also serve on the county task force rewriting the ordinance. I'm speaking today as just a private citizen who happened to be logged into the meeting. The, the alliance has not discussed this, this project, and I would just encourage you all to try to, try to find a solution here. It sounds like this is an unbelievably complicated issue. I think that the applicant sounds like he's willing to make mitigations and make changes. I would, I would encourage the, the county to look at those. The appeal process is, is here because sometimes governing bodies can make mistakes, and our planning division is here to uphold the, the existing code. So I would, like I said, it does sound like this is, this is a tough and complicated issue, and I don't, I don't envy you all today, but I, I do hope that you will seek to find a compromise. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I believe we had a comment in the board chambers. Please come on up.
I'm Leo Cortina, the owner of the location at 3545 Finley Road. And we applied for this over four years ago. I understand the wider delay, but we have a permit. We grew hamps before on the site, and the hemp and the cannabis are the same plants. They're the same odor, they look the same, and the reason we want it, use it, because we want to spread the oil, and all the plants, even if they're feet tall, they're going to be grinded up, and they're going to be used for insulation. Houses or building, they'd be using, North Carolina, Texas, a lot of states, they're using it. So it'll be no waste, even the grass could go recycle on the chips for insulation. So we would grow the hamps, but it's not enough income. That's the reason we want to grow also the cannabis. Now, when we started this project, before they bought the property, we asked the school district about the school building. They said they were going to remove it. So we proceeded, matter of fact, I offered to buy the property. So we proceeded with the project. That's the only reason we did it. Now, it'll be no mess. It'd be clean, because I'm the only one cut the grass in the property. The school district doesn't cut the grass. It's two, three feet tall sometime. I already cut it. They're not cutting the grass. My house is only five feet away on the property line, five and a half feet. It's only about 45, 50 feet to the building. They don't have no bathroom. Well, the remark was, the last meeting, on the, on the lobby, they say, "Ha, ha, ha, you had a good day to me. We're going to use the porta potty." That was a shock to me. They could use a porta potty for a building. I've been in this business building for 50 years. I'm 83. A porta potty's special when it's windy, smell, special in summer. My house is only 50 feet away, not even. When we were doing the foundation, we had a party house.
If you could please finish your statement.
A smell, no matter how much you're cleaning, the wind will make a smell. So they think they could use it.
If you can please finish your statement.
There, they got something coming.
Let's, let's not speak in those, in that kind of language or those terms. Can you please finish your statement? Because your time is up at this moment in time.
So I've already spent over $900,000. If they've completed the project, there'll be another 700 or better. That's the reason they put up the building. The building is there on the, on the, on the site. I'm not going to do anything. I'm not, my kids just said, "You retired three times, and he's still doing it." I should retire it five years ago. That's the only comment I have.
Thank you for your statement.
Thank you very much.
Is there any?
The plant is approved for hamps. It's the same product, same odor, same look.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone with a comment that has not yet gone? I want to make sure to get everybody on their first time. If we want repeats, I think we have time, so let's go ahead and do so. If it's possible to be brief, that would be great.
I'll be very brief. I just want to remind Mr. Cortina that he took an oath. We were out cutting, we've been out many, many times cutting the grass on the property. I've never seen anybody else cutting the grass besides myself. Furthermore, he'll be very happy to know that, that what we thought was a pump house on the property is actually a plumbed and installed restroom. So no porta potties needed.
Thank you very much. I don't know that this board is going to make a decision based on who's mowing the grass, but thank you for helping us figure that out. Any further comments from the public? Want to make sure we get everybody again, please?
Elizabeth Larson, and I should say, the guy that keeps talking and not giving you his name is my husband, John Jensen.
Thank you for clarifying that. We had no idea.
Sorry about that. So again, we hear this thing about, oh, we went to the school district, and they're going to move it, and they're going to sell. The school district, I've asked two school district administrations over there, Dr. McQueen and Dr. Thomas. Neither one of them or their staff know anything about an offer to buy the schoolhouse. They certainly by 2020 or 2019 were not telling people that they were going to move the schoolhouse. By 2018, we already had the application, and we were in, we were in negotiations. We didn't take the keys of the schoolhouse until May of 2022, and in that time, we've done actually a significant amount, including grant writing and everything else. The nightmare scenario for me is what is happening right now? I emailed planning almost five years ago to try to get ahead of any potential projects here, well before we had it, well before the agreements were finished, because I didn't want to happen what is happening right now, having something go next to that schoolhouse. This is the first historic site that I'm aware of that is directly in the path of this whole cannabis industry, and it just doesn't belong there, just doesn't belong there. I've tried to say this over and over, and it, I've talked till I'm blue in the face to planners, this business about it's not a school. It's a school. It's always been a school. Its form and function is a school. It's a school. You look at it, you know it. You know what it is. We want to have kids out there. This summer, we have a team of student archaeologists and historians who are coming to work with us on the site. So we're going to move forward regardless, but this project has been done poorly. They've been, not been honest, and Mr. Cortina came and basically threatened us and told us, "You can't use that property." That was what happened. And it's on tape, and I put a screen grab in our letter to you because it was that serious. As far as, on Saturday, we were out mowing the lawn, and we would have finished, but the tire flew off the mower. So that's how that goes. And there's a lot more coming this year. But again, the school district doesn't know what they're talking about, about buying the schoolhouse. So I just want to knock that one on the head permanently.
Thank you very much. I'm going to, I'm going to very much limit that. Let's not, let's stay on topic on the project itself. Please, sir, I want to give you time as well to have another chance. But let's, let's not have, let's not talk about public members. Let's talk about the project, and let's talk about what we're here to make a decision on. Please.
Well, the project is started because the school. We asked for. Now, how they could use, I had to spend over 40 grand for the septic tank system. The one that was, is there already, it was used for 20, 25 people, worker, when I was a farmer, called to the previous owner. And everything that works, no, I have to put another system for one bathroom for the building. The school and thus have to do that? They have to put a bathroom? They cannot do it. They have no place to put it because of the distance. So if I have to do it, why they don't have to do it?
And again, let's, let's focus on the project. This is not a what-about situation.
For me, it's the project. If I don't have to do it, I'm not going to have to spend another $700,000. I'm not going to do it. So I'm going to stop. That's it. I'll be happy to.
Thank you. Just want to check one last time if there is any further public comment. All right, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back for board deliberation. Supervisor Green?
Well, I do have some thoughts, and I can go first. I don't have to.
I want to make sure to hit up the supervisors who either border or are on. I thought it was on the border, but it was stated that it's on both. So just kind of looking at you guys, see if you want to get things started.
Square, squarely in my district, I believe.
That's what I saw. Maps sometimes.
It's the creek. On the other side of the creek is District Five.
Gotcha. Which is still the same property because it crosses over. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the testimony, everyone, and appreciate everyone's willingness to come back to this rescheduled hearing. I wasn't sure when I started diving into the record here that there was going to be a win-win, but, but I do see one available here. Much of the public comment, not, not all of it, but most of it, has to do with the issue of the schoolhouse is a schoolhouse. And by the definition that was provided by community development in our zoning ordinance as to what the definition of a school is, the adjacent property to this project is not a schoolhouse. And I believe the definition on our ordinance was crafted specifically to mirror state law, as far as state law's definition of a school. The substantial evidences based in the record shows that, notwithstanding the prior use as a school, that use was discontinued decades ago. And so just as a former president is not a sitting president, a former schoolhouse has not been used as a school for decades, is not currently a schoolhouse, is the way I analyze it, and I base that based on the definition provided to us today. And so if the main objection to this project is the potential impact on the historic schoolhouse and some claim that we should impose either the thousand-foot setback, or we should refuse to grant this permit altogether on the basis of an existing schoolhouse operation, I don't believe the evidence supports that. Further, I believe, and thank you, Elizabeth, and John, and Lara, for advocating on behalf of the schoolhouse project. I do have in front of me, which was submitted into the record today, a portion of the project on that, and it looks like they do seek to preserve the schoolhouse and to seek historic register status. But that's a, that, that's a tricky thing, and I can speak to that from my experience in Lakeport, where we have many, many historic buildings, but not many of those property owners have sought historic status, because to do so, when you get that status, severely limits your ability to rehab that property. And so the additional description in this property that you not just want to preserve the schoolhouse, but to make it some type of community center, weddings, reunions, meetings, festivals, arts and culture fairs, et cetera, 4H and FFA meetings, I think that's a great vision, but that's not a schoolhouse vision. That's a proposed new land use that presumably itself would be subject to a conditional use permit process. So I really applaud the vision, but I don't think that the desire to preserve this former schoolhouse trumps in any way the ability for this applicant to bring his project forward. And I just want to highlight one bullet point, also within the Lara proposal, that within six months of the proposal, you would finalize discussions with adjacent property owners for how property can best be used without interfering with their land uses. So it's a two-way street here. We're arguing that this former schoolhouse property would be adversely impacted by the proposed land use before us today. Conversely, I think it's a fair question, although it's not before us today, whether the proposed use of the property where the schoolhouse sits could adversely impact this cultivation operation that is proposed here today. And we don't have to reach that today. I also want to mention briefly, just because it was entered into the record, that the agreement reached between Lara and the school district in 2021 references a property at 3510 East Finley Road. And that was signed and executed by the school district. There's two additional letters from the attorneys on that, also mentioning 3510 East Finley Road. As my understanding, the former schoolhouse property sits at 3505 Finley East Road. And so whatever contract you may have with the school district, I know it's an inadvertent error, but I'm not going to give it credit for close enough for government work. So whatever the ultimate plan is between Lara and between the school district to either operate it under the auspices of Lara as the purported buyer of this property, or whether the school district intends to keep part and parcel, not just the property, but the building for its future, future district and school-related activities, it doesn't look like even in this contract that it's limited solely to district or school activities. So again, based on this agreement, I don't see anything here that treats it as a current schoolhouse. It treats it as an old building that needs restoration and the intended use by the, the lessor or the buyer, as it, as it may be, is to turn it into a community event center. So I'm not sure those two uses, preserving a historic schoolhouse, but also booting up a new community center are necessarily congruent, but I will leave that to the applicant, those people to, to figure that stuff out. To the testimony in the written comments, especially to To the testimony and the written comments, especially to the planning commission hearing, which I believe was not their best effort, I'll leave it at that. You know, we've got to stay focused on the project. We're not here to relitigate the wisdom of whether we should have commercial cannabis in this county, right? That's a bigger question. That's not before us today. We've already answered that question. We passed that ordinance years ago. We've amended it several times. The process before you hear today with the initial study and the checklist and all the findings that are contained in the initial study and the proposed mitigated negative declaration, that takes facts and the property and the proposed project, and it comes up with the checklist, and it comes up with the proposed findings, which are still recommended here today, that we find this project will not have a significant impact on the environment as presented and as based on the evidence contained within the initial study. What I have heard in the written testimony and oral testimony is concerns about cannabis. Not all of the concerns expressed even had to do with the subject property. Upper Lake, other places in the county, I used to live next to a hemp garden somewhere else. That's not on point to the application or to this subject property. So I personally don't give credit to those concerns. I want to validate that everyone has a right to have concerns about cannabis cultivation, but we're here to review the project as it's presented, and if you don't have evidence on top of those concerns, you know, I don't necessarily agree that I have to be bound by those concerns. And I think I can kind of leave it at that. I don't see that, as stated in multiple documents, that granting this use permit will automatically result in the destruction of the schoolhouse, will automatically destroy the view shed when there's a developed agricultural processing facility right across the street that's twice the height of what's proposed here. You know, it just, you know, I get it. It's a sensitive use, and I appreciate the project. I understand why people cherish that schoolhouse. But as far as the legal grounds and the substantial evidence that's required to deny this appeal, you know, there's nothing there. So those are my comments at this point, and I'm very interested to hear what my colleagues think about this.
Thank you for your comments.
You can go next.
Please.
Yes, and so I'm glad we're here, we're at this point. I do appreciate all of the information. I appreciate this coming to where we're at. Planning Department, I really do appreciate the work you put in. I know that it was brought to the planning commission, and they basically gave their, you know, they rendered their decision where the appellant came, brought their information forward to appeal, and by that, you're obligated to pretty much bring it to us with the information you already have, and then everyone else brings their comment to us. So I've read through everything. I've read through, you know, the project, all of the information given, and I also watched the video and listened to all of the different dialogue that took place in there. And just, I don't think anyone knows this, but my grandmother grew up in Finley as a kid. She grew up there, and more than likely, her grandmother, but I know that my family's from the north side of things, but during this time, I think a lot of my family worked over on this area. I don't think my grandmother or my great-grandmother went to this school there or anything of the like. I know they went to different schools, like either a boarding school or something of that nature. And so I know that they more than likely didn't go to this school, but that doesn't really, it's not here or there. I'm just mentioning that because I want to emphasize that it doesn't necessarily share the same nostalgic feeling that others that have accentuated their care for this project. There's folks that are supporting to deny the appeal because they're tied to it, their families are tied to it. It's a schoolhouse that they feel they're connected to. I say that because as a Native American, and the plight for us to seek out and accumulate all of our cultural artifacts that have been lost and trying to put together our culture, bring back things that we've lost, like our languages and songs, you know, artifacts, baskets, anything like that, it's important that every single detail is put together. It's a puzzle that we've lost. And so for me to advocate for that, I have to give that same respect to folks that find things historical to them. And I know that there's a plight to work on making this a historical site. I mean, when you look at it, you know it's built during the time, you know where it's from, there's documentation of it. So with that, I feel like I have to make a conscious, apathetic decision, and especially with the work we're doing with diversity, equity, and inclusion, to, I would support to deny the appeal.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wish to speak on this?
So I'll go ahead and speak on this. I can't seem to bring up the municipal code, but there's a couple of things that have been said that I'm not sure if I'm misunderstanding the code. I know I helped write the code, and I know what the intent was, but you, from what I understand, you can't have hemp and cannabis on the same property. There is a specific category or section within the hemp ordinance that separates that because we were very concerned that people would use hemp to disguise cannabis. And so, we use the word premises and then use the California code for, there's a specific government code that's attached to our code for the hemp ordinance, and when you read that code, it talks about the property, not just the site where the hemp will be or where the cannabis will be. It speaks to the entire parcel. So I feel like your project is either unintended to grow hemp, and you're talking to us about hemp, or it's just never going to work in what you actually want to do. I do have a question for staff. At this moment, I know when I'm looking through the state, I'm not seeing a historical landmark designation for the schoolhouse. I heard in reviewing the video, and just for full disclosure, I happened to come in, not specifically for this project, but I did happen to come in and I watched the deliberation from the planning commission. I just wanted to see how things are going, and happened to listen into the conversation more towards the end of that conversation. But there was some words shared that it is designated historically by the county, and I believe it was said by the state, but I know that I can't find it for the state, but I also can't find anything specific to the county. Wondering if you can speak to that. Does that exist? Has that been designated?
It's probably on the county list. Yeah. I believe it's on the county list. Yeah. One moment. We're gathering data for you.
Okay. No, we have, at this moment, we have closed that, and we'll get an answer to that from our staff. It's obvious that the building has history. I agree and appreciate the words shared by Vice Chair Crandall. And I think, I'm just going to put a shameless plug. This is why we're looking for the Heritage Commission to do the work that the Heritage Commission should be doing, is to protect sites, landmarks, buildings, things of the kind. And it would appear that it would be one of those buildings that would definitely need to have that level of protection. There was an offer placed on the table. I want to say it sounded like it was mutual between Lara and the applicant to make some changes. And I think that those changes can continue to be discussed, but there are issues within the initial study of things that have been overlooked or just, some are small, I don't want to call them mistakes, but things that don't quite match the area site. For example, it says it's surrounded by RL, but then describes that it's surrounded by agriculture, little things like that. And then it speaks to the exact project site, which is located as the map was shown to us. But right now, the applicant is saying that, yes, I want to move it, and yes, there's the possibility of changing the project, which, in my opinion, changed the project description, and I'm okay with saying, go back and start that process over, and then let's see what that mitigation looks like. Whenever we find, whether it's sacred artifacts, sacred sites, it's not a cancellation of things, it's a mitigation to ensure the safety of those sites and those landmarks. And again, I don't know if you have an answer for me about the historical designation? Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. We're just triple confirming for you. One more minute.
Okay. But I think that it, I would like to believe that there's always a way to mitigate so that you don't negate somebody's property rights doing what they want to do. And I would hate to see what the alternative is if this is not what's possible there because I know the hemp ordinance, I helped create it with Rob Brown at the time that he was in office, and I don't know that it would prohibit that from happening, and I think that would be more detrimental than what we could potentially mitigate and pull back and make sure that. I personally don't like the process that you've taken, sir. You have a pad ready for a piece of the project, and to me, that's kind of piecemealing a project. I think that should have been discussed with the approval and then move forward to create a pad because I don't know that that's the right location for that building because that building does have a potential detriment to the area for that building, and I would love to see if we can save that. So I feel like there's some piecemealing that has occurred under the guise of hemp, which we were all a little nervous that hemp would be utilized in order to build buildings. This is not the first time that this has happened, and maybe we need to tighten those loopholes. I don't want to approve the project today. I think that there's too many changes that have been discussed and potentially could mitigate some of these issues. And I would say you need to rerun your initial study, you need to re-review the impacts to the sites that are there. There's the Moston site. I want to make sure that there's no impact. I want to make sure the schoolhouse is thought of. It was brought up about the Clear Lake Hitch. Now, yes, we do have the 100, and I believe we are at 100, but the state is 100, 150, and 200 for the setbacks from waterways, depending on what the class of the waterways are. Not sure what class that is. But we do have those setbacks, but we also have the new emergency orders. We do have our declared emergency of the hitch. I'm slightly curious if you are meeting the emergency orders at this moment because you do have a well on the property, and all well owners, I believe, are supposed to meet those orders. But I'm more interested in giving a chance to see what's possible rather than saying no with what obviously could not work with what's being proposed here, but there have been conversations that I think could possibly lead us to a yes. And until I have an initial study that provides all of the results of what that would, what impacts that might have, there's just no way to say yes at this moment in time. So that would be, my pursuit is a denial of the appeal, I believe without prejudice, to allow the applicant to go back. And I know I've heard and I've seen in some of the letters, wasted enough time for staff, and I don't see that as a waste of time for staff. That's what staff's job is to do, is to work on projects and find ways to make it work. If it ends up that it doesn't work, then it ends up it doesn't work. If it ends up it can work, then that's exactly what we're there for. So I'll stop there with, and I believe I got a...
We have confirmed local. It is on our local list.
Okay, thank you. I need to obviously figure out where that list is because I could not find it when I was doing my own personal research. Okay, I'll leave it there, and I see that there is Supervisor Green. Let's go with Supervisor Pyska.
So I had asked staff for the site map to consider some of the negotiated changes to take a look at, and there's not one, correct?
Correct.
Right, and so, it does change the project, so I do concur with my colleague here about that. A lot of the issues that were brought up by the planning commission and a lot of the letters that were sent in would really negate any use if we're talking about view sheds and proximity to the creek and the hitch. So that concerns me, that, you know, if we were to deny this project, then there couldn't be a winery or an olive mill or any of those other things that someone may need to build a building here and have a processing shed. And I don't really think that to be true. I think this is cannabis-specific, that people are, you know, have very sensitive feelings about cannabis in this location, which I do understand. And I do understand that there is a lot of value to this historic building. But I think that there's compromise here, and I would like to see it come back to show, to show the compromises that have been brought up and to show lessened impact to the schoolhouse building, because I really think that there can be both. They both can be done well. So that's what I would like to see, too.
Supervisor Simon, just wanted to check in with you, or go with Supervisor Green?
Appreciate the comments. I want to point out that staff has prepared a proposed list of conditions of approval. There are several additions based upon the meeting with Lara, and because that meeting occurred fairly recently, my understanding is the reason we don't have the site maps is because that was a compromise reached fairly recently, and in the proposed project conditions of approval are not just a submission of the new site plan showing the relocated farm, but also checking with those companies that prepared the biological and hydrology studies to ensure that the scope of review that they did in preparing their reports wasn't limited solely to the footprint of the cultivation site, that it applied to the whole 24-acre parcel. Also, I want to remind that if people did dive into that hydrology report, it said that this roughly half acre of mixed-lake cultivation within a greenhouse on a 23-acre parcel is far less in footprint than prior cultivation of tree crops on that same property. So I believe the figure was 2.1 to 2.4 acre-feet a year, and a watershed that provides, let's see, that was 0.01% of the entire aquifer. So in terms of water usage, it has been studied and provided an additional hydrology report in the packet. There's even a drought management plan, which followed the ordinance then in place when the drought was there. So if there are remaining questions about water usage or setbacks or anything like that, everything is in the packet. And other than expressing new concerns and asking them to kick the can back down the road after close to four years since the original application date, seems to me to be an unreasonable burden upon the applicant unless you're expecting to get a whole lot of information. So I do think the proposed conditions of approval will incorporate those compromises that have already been negotiated. Assuming that we get a positive response from the reviewers of the hydrology and the biological survey, I think we could proceed on that basis. Conversely, I am confident that if CDD gets indications from those entities that the relocation of the cultivation site would land them in a part of the parcel that was not reviewed, then I'm sure they would red-flag it and not issue the permit pending further action. And I don't want to state that for CDD. On the Clear Lake Hitch information order, I just want to mention one thing. This is in the Big Valley watershed. As a property owner in that watershed, I hope you have already received notification from the State Water Resources Control Board about the reporting requirements for the well on that property, and I hope you're already complying. But if you're not aware of that, and if it would give comfort to the board if we proposed that as an additional project condition of approval, that the applicant not only provide evidence that they're aware of this, but they actually, in their annual property management plan, share whatever water data was reported to the state water boards. It would be nice if the county also got a look at that data. But I don't, at this point, if there's a concern about kicking the whole thing back, you know, I'm not going to propose adding that as a project condition of approval. But I do think it is relevant, and I think also, should they follow what the state water boards has already decided to do in the next steps of this, I think that in and of itself should be sufficient. I don't think any additional review of the initial study would yield any new information on that. It's a lesser water use, it's well documented, the hydrology report is there, the drought management plan is there, and whatever added love the state water boards has come up with, I feel they're well poised to deal with that.
I appreciate the comment. I just want to make a statement that part of our, let's say, we end up moving forward with approving the appeal, is to approve the initial study. And I feel that that is not possible, to approve an initial study that does not match what the project has become. So either we're approving the original project that is alongside the road... So either we're approving the original project that is alongside the road, or we're asking to redo this part so that they can have the initial study match what the new changed project looks like. And to me, that leads to a lack of mitigating factor, and so that's why I would, I cannot approve an initial study conditionally when the initial study does not match what the new version, which seems to have been accepted by the applicant, of looking at moving those buildings and greenhouses to a more secluded area of their property that would then create a better setback for the schoolhouse. And I struggle to, actually, I don't struggle, I would not be able to approve an initial study that does not match that. And being okay with it as long as a letter comes out later on, I think that we need to go through the process over. And I'm going to pause and pass it on to Supervisor Simon.
Obviously, I appreciate all the information in the testimony given today. You know, when I went through this packet and looked at this project as it came through, being one of the, I think, only board member when we approved this, and you guys can tell me if I'm wrong on that, but, you know, with the ordinance, this seemed like the area that we would see a project like this come into fruition. And I know there was some research done to be brought to us to get it to this position. Obviously, I know the Kelsey Creek Schoolhouse building, there's a conversation that's happening, but the information provided in all the packet, in all the information that's given, a lot of personal feelings one way or the other, but I was prepared today to move forward with the recommendation of our community development department and overturn the Planning Commission's decision. I've heard some discussion today about denying the appeal without prejudice so it could go back and be reworked, so if that's a concern, prepared to do that. But it was kind of like a moving target as far as it goes with the schoolhouse. In the future, it may have something come to fruition, you know, I don't know, not part of that project, not in my district, so ain't 100% sure on that. But I've heard some very passionate folks that seem to be very determined to make that happen. So we'll see what happens with, the conversation ends up today, but I appreciate all the work. I hope to see this project come back one way or the other if it's not approved today.
Supervisor Green?
Just a couple of process questions then for staff and county council. I'm not aware of a way to deny an appeal without prejudice. The proper thing might be a continuance to allow for submission of additional information. But in crafting the proposed conditions of approval, it seemed to have at least some comfort that the initial study as presented today would survive and be defensible even if the footprint of the half-acre cultivation site was relocated as requested. But just a process question, if we do something without prejudice, would it come in the form of a motion to deny the appeal without prejudice, or would it be a continuance or some other type of action? And then last question would be, even if we do kick it back for some additional thing, what's to say that, again, the whole laundry list of concerns that were raised in the initial packet and any number of letters and comment will not raise additional issues so that if it does come back for further consideration, that we aren't going to have to reconfigure this project again? Again, this applicant was waiting close to four years for action on this permit. So to the question of can we adopt an initial study fairly and competently and defensively with the proposed changes?
Thank you. After staff did have the meeting with the Lucune Area Revitalization Association, we gathered the list of amendments to the project that they expressed satisfaction or support of, went back to see, make sure that the SEQA would still be appropriate. We didn't have exact clarity on the cultural, although the cultural report, having identified where any sensitive sites might be, gave us a significant level of comfort that scooching the greenhouses 200 feet to the south would actually be further away from any potential impacts, not closer. We then also took a look at the bio report, which identified both the original proposed location as well as the amended proposed location as previously tilled soil. So we were fairly confident that the bio report would not result in any additional mitigations, given the movement of the greenhouses. So it is due to that that we had a level of comfort suggesting the conditions that we added, which all were contingent, the permit would not be activated until we received letters from the authors of those reports stating and confirming, yes, the entire parcel was included, and we have no further mitigations to have offered. That would be a great thing for our file. Additionally, prior to activation of the site or of the permit, the new site plan would need to be submitted to our department. So we do have a current and approved site plan. And also that it be relocated so that there was at least a 500-foot separation from the Kelsey Creek Schoolhouse. So given the review that we did do prior to the Planning Commission hearing, we were comfortable with the addition of those conditions. And so approval of that project would have been contingent on the satisfaction of those particular conditions, as well as the other many pages of conditions.
Thank you. Supervisor Pyska?
If I could add one more thing, water use is a standard item in our annual reports. So we were not concerned about impacts to the hitch.
Thank you.
So the site, the site plan would be updated and approved before they would be able to activate?
The site plan would have to be resubmitted as it would have been approved, which would have shown that 500-foot separation from the schoolhouse, as well as the movement 200 feet away from where it was previously located. Yes, we rely on these documents because going forward, we have to have a firm, clear record of what was actually approved, so that when we're all gone and dispersed to the winds, future planners know what to rely on.
I'm happy to hear that because on my house site, the subject hang is on the opposite side. Somebody made a change somewhere 40 years ago, and it's caused nothing but problems ever since. So that's really been my big concern. We can agree to these conditions, but I want to make sure the site map is updated and approved before any activation. So that does help me with that concern.
I'll make one final comment. I think there's a reason for the process that we have, and that process is to be as transparent as possible. The process at the state clearinghouse is to make it available to the public so that the public can provide feedback. It's not always possible for the public to be available on specific days when the Planning Commission is speaking of this, or when the Board of Supervisors is speaking of this, but the timeframe that the clearinghouse has and the sending out of letters to adjacent neighbors within a certain amount of linear feet from the project, I think all those things need to be considered with the changes because there may be a different reaction from different neighbors. Not looking to get more negative reactions, but want to make sure people have that ability to provide that feedback in order to know there's been a change since this went through the clearinghouse and since we opened it up for public comment from people. Here are the changes. Let's give that time process and then come back. I would prefer to not have a continuance. I would prefer to have a denial with no prejudice for the fact that our Planning Commission is our land use body, and I want to make sure that we don't skip over that with the new findings and the new information that would be provided. I want to make sure and respect that process as well.
California state law is fairly clear on what requires a recirculation. I'll defer it over to Michelle in just a moment. But just my understanding, and I'm sure county council can correct me if I'm mistaken, a denial without prejudice closes the permit. The applicant would then be able to completely reapply for a brand-new permit and go through the exact same process, but we would start at the beginning. It would not be like if the board decided to continue in order to gain more information, the permit would still, the application would still remain open. But I will defer to Principal Planner.
The recommended changes are also provided to the Planning Commission.
Yes. Also, just for clarification, Section 15073.5 of the SEQA guidelines, recirculation of a negative declaration prior to adoption. I'll spare you on the word-for-word, but essentially, it's if any project changes or modifications to the document are, can be constituted as a substantial revision. And it says substantial revision of the negative declaration shall mean, one, a new avoidable significant effect is identified and mitigation measures or project revisions must be added in order to reduce the effect or insignificance. Or two, the lead agency determines that our proposed mitigation measures or project revisions will not reduce potential effects to less than significant, and new measures or revisions must be required. And then it goes on to subsection C, recirculation is not required under the following circumstances. One, mitigation measures are replaced with equal or more effective pursuant to Section 15074.1. Two, new project revisions are added in response to written or verbal comments on the project's effect identified in the proposed negative declaration, which are not new avoidable significant effects, effects, excuse me. Or three, measures or conditions of project approval are added after circulation of the negative declaration, which are not required by SEQA, which do not create new significant environmental effects and are not necessary to mitigate an avoidable significant impact. And lastly, four, new information is added to the neg deck, which merely clarifies, amplifies, or makes insignificant modifications, excuse me, to the negative declaration. So I know that was a lot of words, but in this case, it would be number two and three that are applicable. So just wanted to clarify, under state SEQA requirements anyway, would not trigger recirculation from staff's perspective.
So moving the site is not significant?
Not in this case where it's 200 feet south and the entire parcel has been disturbed and was covered in those initial analyses.
Yes, County Health concerns.
Yes, you know, the SEQA guidelines speak for themselves. Procedurally, your board always has that option to either continue this hearing to a date and time certain for purposes of collecting more information, more data. The other, your board also has the option of, as it was referenced at times, to deny the appeal without prejudice, which, as Director Ternier stated, would restart that process, albeit in a shorter time period, as opposed to denial with prejudice, or just a denial without prejudice clause.
Any further, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just last thing. I'm going to attempt a motion here shortly, but I just want to point out that this appeal is part of the process. So I do appreciate very much the Planning Commission having the first bite at this apple. I've expressed disappointment with what they did with their opportunity, and I am very grateful that we have the opportunity to do de novo review today for that reason. So I don't see any big, urgent need. I don't see any new information that would come from kicking this can down the road. I don't want to prejudice the applicant, again, with any unnecessary delay, having brought forth a, not only a good project, but having shown some willingness to make major revisions to, major minor revisions to the project to additionally mitigate the concerns that were raised by their neighbors. And I do very much believe there's a win-win here. Mr. Guintivano, there are a couple of motions here. Was there any suggested language you had regarding the first motion regarding the initial study?
None on that first recommended motion. I do have some clarifying questions on the second one, though, for-
All right, I believe that's true. Let me take a run at this and see where we're at, and then we'll talk about the second motion if it needs to happen. I'm going to move that the Board of Supervisors find that the proposed major use permit, UP 20-40, for higher ground farms at 3545 Finley East Road, Kelseyville, APN 00802607, would not have a significant impact on the environment, and adopt mitigated negative declaration, IS 20-50, determining that all impacts can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of the mitigation measures within the mitigated negative declaration, IS 20-50, subject to the findings in the memorandum dated April 15, 2024, and the conditions of approval in Exhibit E. Was there any amended in there I need to add? Was anything amended?
Do we amend the date of the staff report to April 23, please? Thank you.
All right. Subject to the findings in the memorandum dated April 23, 2024, and the same motion in all other respects. That's my motion.
Second. Oh, sorry. Sorry, Jessica. No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I beat you to it.
Joanna will figure it out. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Nay.
Mr. Guintivano?
Motion carries.
So with the second motion regarding the appeal approval, your board may move to intend to grant appeal, AB 24-01, based on the findings of fact in the January 11, 2024 staff report, pages 21 to 22, if your board so wishes, and direct staff to prepare draft findings of fact.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Nay. Motion carries. All right. Thank you very much for the conversation and this item. So if administrative staff would maybe wait if it's possible, I know we have staff here from other facilities outside of the courthouse and checking in with the board, what do you guys think about getting our behavioral health items done and our health services item done and then taking a lunch? Or would you prefer taking a lunch right now?
I need to, with your permission, ask, we have consultants waiting.
Oh.
And Matthew, please come forward. Will they be available later? Otherwise, I fully support bringing behavioral health forward.
I'm actually not entirely certain whether they'll be available. It depends how much later. If I can get an approximate time, I'm happy to run that by our consultants. I will note that they have been waiting, though, for over an hour at this time.
Then let's go ahead and take up that item.
Can we take five minutes?
Five minutes? Okay, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break, and then we will take up item 6.6. we are taking up item, welcome back. We will continue from where we left off and take up our timely 10:30 a.m. item, 6.6, consideration of an agreement for professional communications and public relations services with Imprinta Communications Group, Inc., in the not-to-exceed amount of $264,000 over three years. And we have Matthew Rothstein to introduce the item.
Good afternoon, Board. Matthew Rothstein, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. Members of your board have expressed interest in enhanced public communications and public relations supports. Creation and distribution of monthly county-of-like newsletters and assistance with planning and executing targeted informational campaigns have been raised as priorities in recent months, and district-specific newsletters have also been of interest to members of your board. In response, the County Administrative Office issued Solicitation Number 2411, seeking firms to provide professional communications and public relations services. Five qualified firms responded, and following a rigorous and competitive consultant selection process and follow-up interviews with the top three ranked respondents, Imprinta Communications Group, Inc. was unanimously ranked number one by the panel. And many thanks to leaders and communications professionals from Health and Behavioral Health Services, the County Administrative Office, and Lake County Office of Education for their diligent work evaluating the proposals. All of our panelists found Imprinta to be highly All of our panelists found Impreta to be highly qualified and experienced. Impreta's strong emphasis on ensuring communications met the information needs of all Lake County residents was viewed as a particular point of strength. We're truly grateful to all of the strong firms that submitted proposals, and staff recommends today your board approve the agreement with Impreta Communications Group in the not-to-exceed amount of $264,000, and that's over three years, so $88,000 per year, and authorize the chair to sign. The monthly retainer of 6,500 would accommodate monthly countywide and up to quarterly district-specific newsletters, and it will also cover communications planning support. And this agreement would also allow up to $10,000 per year for additional services such as targeted informational campaigns. And Katrina Salgado and Tomas Pauer of Impreta are available on Zoom, and they're prepared to make a brief presentation as well. Welcome, Katrina and Tomas, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you so much for having us. Again, my name is Katrina. I'm one of the founders of Impreta. I'm hoping we could share our screen a little bit, Matthew, if that's possible.
Yes, please, thank you.
And I'm here with Tomas, who is our account director. Tomas, you want to say a few words before we jump into it?
Sure. Hello, I'm Tomas Pauer. I'm an account director with Impreta Communications. I have 15 years of agency experience handling this. Most notably, I used to be the External Relations Director for the American Red Cross of Nevada for the state of Nevada. So it's all about me, but I'm now with Impreta.
So thank you so much for having us. I'm hoping that you could see our screen. If not yet, let me just tell you, we are so honored to have this opportunity to work with you. We've worked with many, many individual, smaller rural community settings as well. So this is not new to us, and there are, slide please, there are three main points that we'd like you to understand about Impreta. We were built for you. There will be no learning curve. As I said, we've done this for 21 years. We understand where you guys are coming from. We were DEI before DEI was even a term. There is, there is no, we will be an extension for your team. There will be no difference from working with you and working with your staff. We will make it so that you need us for as much or as little or as appropriate as possible. If you want toolkits, we're happy to do that. If you want us to do the full service, we're happy to do that as well. And at Impreta, everything is done in-house. Think of us as your one man, one-stop shop. From language to creative to technical, we are here for you to do that. Next slide, please. The dots you will see on your screen, the yellow dots, are all rural communities that we've worked with up and down the state. And as you can see, Lake County is right next to a couple of those, and some of these are the projects that you see on the right side of your screen. People come to you to live their best life. People come and live in Lake County because they want a better life, and we're here to help you help them make it that way. Our experience with rural hard-to-reach communities is what led us to develop this optimized communications plan that we're presenting to you today. Next slide, please. So this is just a smattering of what we do. As I said, everything is done in-house, from interpretation of foreign languages to newsletters to websites and all of that in between. And they are all integrated so that there will be no downtime in these projects. Next slide. These are some of the people that we've worked with, the companies and communities we've worked with. We choose to do and only want to do meaningful work, and hopefully, we will be able to do that and deliver for you as well, because we believe that you really care about this community, as seen by the way you really consider what your constituents talk about. Next slide. This particular project calls for newsletters, and I have here just some samples of versions and formats that we've used for other clients. Some of them want to be printed out on their desktops, some of them want to be sent by PDF file, and some of them want electronic files. So these are some of the samples that are available to you as well. And we will make it so that you guys can take care of it after the project is done, or we can continue to keep doing it. We love working with clients like you and projects like this. So you're speaking to the creative director, so I'm just really excited about this project. Next slide. And most importantly is, we have come to the understanding of the unicorn that is Lake County. The five districts are all very different. Each community is unique as a fingerprint, and that's why our work in cultivating empathy, empowerment, and education in this district is so important, and that will reflect on your districts as well. Our goal is to help you help people live their best lives here, and that starts really with building trust and communicating authenticity. That leads to our next slide, optimized communications plan. I'm not going to read through the whole thing, but basically, it starts out with understanding your target audience, whether it's countywide or district-wide, moving into our special understanding and platforms that we like to use. In the middle is basically aligning with Vision 2028 and Lake County 2050. Matthew already said the scope of the work covers district-wide newsletters as well as community newsletters, and whether you want that as analog, meaning PDF forms that people can print out on their desktops, or digital or both, we're happy to accommodate. Again, there's a feedback loop, so we can always hear and pivot as to what's needed. Next slide, please. I took the liberty of creating a couple of versions of newsletters for you. On the left is, this is a, this is a PDF version. On the left, you'll see Lake County as the county kind of parent, and on the right is a customized district version. So as you can see, there's unifying, they're related, but they're not identical, and that's on purpose, because we want to create a brand and we want to create visibility, so when people see it, they know who it's coming from. Last slide is a sample of electronic newsletters, again, using, I took the liberty of using the mastheads, but again, very customizable, copy and images can change. We could do it so that there's a template that you use every month, or we can change it out every quarter, depending on what's going on. You know, it's really up to the, to our teams, both you and us, to be able to create something that your constituents would love. So hopefully, I tried to keep within the short time that was allotted, open to any questions. Hope to work with you soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Anything further, Mr. Rothstein?
Not at this time.
All right. Supervisor Paeska.
I'm glad to see that we have this in front of us. This is something that I've been wanting to do for a while. It's really difficult to communicate with our constituents, especially, my district is so diverse, three very distinctive areas. It's really difficult to communicate to those three different areas, the work that we're doing, and the engagement that we need, especially now with the area plans. So I was a little bit confused, is, do we have the ability to do monthly district emails, or is it quarterly?
So Impreta does have the capacity to accommodate monthly district-specific newsletters, if that's the direction of your board. They did indicate that that would add somewhere between 1,500 and 2,100 in monthly cost, so that would equate to 18,000 to 25,200 in annual cost and up to 75,600 over the proposed three-year term. And certainly, the communications encompassed by this agreement wouldn't be the totality of county communications, and we would be happy to work with you, and there will be those regular monthly countywide newsletters as well, and I'd imagine there will be items of relevance to one district or another in those as well. So just wanted to provide you that background, so your board has a chance to consider it.
Okay. Yeah, that's something to consider. So I guess we can work on that. Is that an overall cost, or is that per-district cost?
So that would be an overall cost. So the 1,500 would assume that one to two districts were doing monthly newsletters. 2,100 would assume all five were doing monthly newsletters. So in the agreement, though, again, before you today, envisions quarterly newsletters for the districts and monthly at the county level.
Okay. And then another request that I've heard, and I'm, I'm not sure how to do this, but a follow-up, a board report after each meeting, and it, I know one of my colleagues in Napa County does it, it's very bare bones, but I think that would help folks understand how the day went here, how things were voted on, rather than having to hunt down the minutes or watch videos, if we could do something very brief, very, very brief and bare bones. So I don't know what that looks like. I'm just bringing that up as a concern that I've heard from constituents, and I think that might make it easier for the communities to understand the work that we're doing here on Tuesdays without having to commit to nine hours like Helen is back there.
I appreciate that feedback. That's not built into the agreement that's presented for your board today, so we would have to evaluate what additional costs there would be for the firm to take that on, but can definitely appreciate the potential value of having such communication.
Any other comments or questions? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. True confession, I'm a recovering journalist from the news ed side, so PR people, we're not tight, but I'm looking at your proposal here, and it's, it's really beautiful, and I'm excited about bringing you guys on. One thing that has been, in my mind, anyway, underemphasized, probably due to capacity, is our ability to outreach to our Spanish-speaking residents. So I don't see a direct call-out in the scope of work, but I do see that you have listening sessions planned, and I wonder if you could just speak, I love it, you were DEI before DEI was cool, but can you speak just a little bit, because I don't see it called out, what you hope to learn in the listening sessions and how that's going to inform, in particular, whatever messaging might require, either an add-on contract or something like that for Spanish-speaking individuals that may not be specifically called out in this proposal?
Thank you so much for that. Actually, we had this conversation about listening tour, and the active word here is "listening." It's not really about touring the entire Lake County. So if there are people who are, that you believe are worth speaking with in terms of, you know, one or two, so that they can be the voice for your constituency, we're happy to do that. If you would like us to go do Zoom calls with a group of people, or school boards, or community groups, we're happy to do that as well. I did something similar when we were, when it was a big anti-hate situation in Orange County, and the, you know, the hate crime situation there, like, rose by about 200%. So we're happy to do whatever it is that you find necessary. Sometimes we've found that just speaking with a couple of people from the district and the supervisors themselves, because they know so much about their constituents, will be enough. Again, we're happy to adjust to whatever it is. Everybody at our staff is bilingual, and Tomas actually speaks not just Spanish, but French and a couple other languages as well. We have bilingual Asian languages as well, if needed. I know that from your demographics, that's not necessary, but Spanish, we have about four or five people on staff who do that on a daily basis.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'll go ahead and provide my comment. Again, I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate the opportunity. Definitely have interest in having a little bit more bilingual material in order to ensure that as many residents as possible can look into what's going on, but today, I will not be in favor of this contract. I think that, I think that the people want to see physical change, and they don't want to just read about what we're working on. I think we can talk to our people. I think we can meet with our people. Yes, it's not easy to meet with everybody, but I, money is money, and I think this money could be placed, in my opinion, in better uses. So again, appreciate what you do and what you're offering. It's not personal. It's just a personal reason of where I think money should be placed. And I guess my last question is, where is this money coming from?
And this money was budgeted at mid-year?
And it was budgeted in our, just in the admin office, or in our economic development, or in our?
It's under admin.
Okay. I got a yes and maybe no from Mr. Carter?
I thought we budgeted under the board of supervisors.
Okay.
Thank you, Stephen.
All right. Thank you very much. If there's nothing further, Supervisor Crandall, Vice Chair Crandall?
And so I just, something came to mind when you were saying something about this chair. I have three town halls. I meet with them. They ask me questions. I give them to them. They have to take my word. A lot of times, I refer them to the video. They're not going to sift through an hour video. Sometimes we, as staff, can sometimes put up the short, brief session that's there. A lot of times, that doesn't happen, or else it's just more work, basically, for you or one of us to do. I think a letter as such, or not, not a letter, but a newsletter, especially if it's focusing on the things that are already done or that we're working on, I really don't see an issue with this. I know in explaining one of the things that passed last week to one of my town halls, we had everything present, and if I had a letter, like, something of the nature that we're talking about, it might have gave them more, you know, satisfaction, rather than me telling them and showing them the actual, what is it, the staff report, or the announcement or agenda item. So I think this is beneficial. I, I know it's going to be more generalized. It's not necessarily something that's going to highlight anything for me to benefit from it, but just what we've done, a record, if you will. And so, so I think this would be good going forward to whoever serves as a supervisor from here forward as well. I know for my district, it's important. So I don't see an issue with it. I think it's money well spent. I would love to have another staff member to do this for me, but I don't, you know? So, and I don't want to put the burden on any of you to have to do any of this as well. So, yeah, so I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. This is a very standardized practice in other counties, and most counties have the support staff to, to do this for them. We don't, and so this is something that we have to contract out. But people will be able to be on the email list to receive this. I think it's going to make our discussions at the town halls more robust, because people will be prepared and front-loaded with some of the information that we're working on, because you're right, right now, we just show up and we have our notes, and we go down the list of everything, and, and there's not very many people in the room. And so how are you adequately getting all that information out to your constituents when, you know, a very small percent of them have the ability to show up at a meeting? And so this is an equity issue, to take down those barriers and make sure that we're adequately communicating to everybody. And then, you know, hopefully, we're not going to be having disasters, but this is a better way for us to be communicating if and when that does happen. We'll already have those email lists established and created, and admin and OES will be able to pump out information to people, make sure that we can, we have better lines of communication with the constituents that live here.
Thank you for your comment. Anything further? Supervisor Simon?
I'm glad to see you come back, too, when we had our initial conversations on this. Obviously, some of us are Facebook-challenged, or whatever you want to call it, getting out there, but showing up to the meetings and other things, like you said, giving the information. I think having a bilingual opportunity is really exciting about that, you know, as we move forward. But I think the quarterly reports out that we'd be able to put out there would really help, because we see a lot of times, as we're moving through processes, we move along, we do projects. Prime example, 29-quarter study that was done back in 2014. There's a lot of projects in my district that are going to be coming in the future that are already planned, already on the books and moving, but there's a lot of conversation still about them. I think we could really highlight certain projects coming, not in the short term, but also in the long term, so we can really have our advisory committees and our, you know, folks doing the work concentrate on things, all right, hey, that's already done, let's, let's talk about projects going forward now. Let's pick little things up. I think communicating too with, I got, I don't have two advisory councils, but I do have two councils. I have the Lower Lake Action Committee Group and the MATH, two different organizations the way they're set up, but that communication with the constituents, I think, is just so important. So I like the project that we're starting with, the three-year project here, and it'll kind of grow as it's needed, whether or not it's monthly, but each one of us can have, all right, hey, this month, I'd like to get in on it, you know, and do a little more or something. So I think we can work together to do that. I hear you, too, Bruno, being out there and doing that stuff, but I think this gives us a good opportunity, a tool to communicate in a much better way.
Thank you for your comment. Vice Chair Crandall?
Yes, just, even considering the town halls, there's also the CSAs, there's also the Business Association meetings that we go to. It's something that I can hand out as soon as I go there, you know, each month, to show, and, and then be hammered for, okay, this hasn't progressed, in my opinion, whatever, but at least it's there and it's a basis, and they're not relying on me remembering or going through all of the things that I've listed, or lack thereof, if that makes sense. So a lot of times, at least those things that we're doing will be on the plate. The other things that I, I'm working on, I can give them updates on the side, are on me then, if that makes any sense. So I just, I just. So I just, I just think this is a good tool to use and I think it'll help.
All right, if there's nothing further, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Come on up.
Hello Helen Owen. I think it's a great project, although I kind of stand with Supervisor Bruno on this, that I think that we, money well spent. I think there might be some other things that are a little more pressing at this moment in the county, such as roads and some of the other things. So I would probably rather see the money spent elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I don't see anyone else standing up in the chamber and no hands raised in the Zoom room. And so bringing it back to the board for action.
I move to approve the Professional Communication Service and Public Relations Service with Imprinted Communications Group, Inc. in the not to exceed amount of $264,000 over three years and authorize the chair to sign.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much for joining us today and your presentation and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And with that, we're going to take a lunch break and we will return for our, to continue our open session items at 1:30 PM. All right, welcome back. It is 1:31, we are going to take up our next item, 6.7, our 11:20 AM item, consideration of resolution amending the master fee schedule for departmental services rendered by the county. And we have admin staff. Welcome Ms. Moreno and Ms. Hehan. Heenan?
Hello, good afternoon board. Casey Moreno, Deputy County Administrative Officer. With me today is Shannon Heenan, Administrative Analyst with Administration. So Shannon worked directly with various departments in preparation for today's update. So I invited her up here with me. For your consideration today is the annual master fee schedule update for county departments. The Administration Department brings the master fee schedule forward around the end of April, beginning of May every year. This is the optimal time because many of the Community Development Department fees go into effect 60 days after your board's approval. So this allows for the fee changes to go into effect on July 1st. Most of the changes are increases by Consumer Price Index or CPI. The CPI this year is 2.37%. We follow the Oakland-San Francisco Bay Area February to February average for CPI. The other ways that fees can change is by fee study or state or federal mandate. The departments who have changes this year are Agricultural and Weights and Measures, Otter Controller County Clerk, Community Development, Public Services, Public Works, Registrar of Voters and Elections, Sheriff and Water Resources. So to start out with Agricultural and Weights and Measures, a fee study was completed and increased the hourly rate, which in turn increased various fees. A few fees were not previously listed, so they have been added to the master fee schedule. There were also legislative changes in AB 1304, which increased various Ways and Measures fees. And if you want to ask questions as I go through each department, that might be best so that we can get answers if any departments have answers for you.
Doesn't appear to have be any questions right now.
Next is the Otter Controller County Clerk. So under the Fish and Wildlife fees, the listed fees now include the state mandated with the $50 clerk handling fee, so they're not increasing anything, but it's out together. Community Development, their Building Safety Division has increased mostly by CPI and there are a couple new fees. A fee study was completed, which resulted in the hourly rate increasing and minimum charges being established for a couple of the fees. Code Enforcement has increased their inspection fee by the CPI. And the Planning Division and Support Services has increased various fees by CPI and a few of the fees encompass multiple departments, so those fees are increasing as well. Next is Public Services, they increased fees by CPI. Public Works, a fee study was completed for the hourly rate of the Surveyor Division. Other fees were increased by the CPI. Registrar of Voters and Elections has added a line for clarification to define the subcategory, so their fees are not increasing. Sheriff is increasing various civil fees per government code. And Water Resources, most fees are increasing by CPI and a few of the Quagga Muscle Program fees are decreasing to reflect the limit set in the program ordinance. And those are the changes.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Please Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I apologize, I'm not familiar, but under Otter Controller Fish and Wildlife, it looks like the fees are mandated by the state, but under Fish and Wildlife, it's quite a jump on the EIR fee from 1,426 to three times that much, 4,176. Is that because we were not previously following the state guideline and we're finally catching up? Or I'm just trying to figure out, it looks like it's set by the state, but it jumped quite a bit. So did the state jump that particular fee quite a bit?
I'm sorry, which one was that, the EIR?
The EIR, it's a proposed raise from 1,42625 to 4,17625. And based on the other increases, that could be a transposition error.
I believe the EIR previously was 4,126, so it might have just been a transposition. But it just increased $50 to include the clerk handling fee.
So under the old fee, there might be a transposition error?
There may have been.
Okay, thank you.
I see no other questions. I do have a question, I apologize for not asking earlier and I appreciate all the information that was submitted to me for my requests for further information on this. But what is the total number of hours a 100% full-time person should be working?
So
For the year?
Out of the 2,080 hours that we are paid, typically it's around 1,776 that are eligible working hours. So that takes out break times, holiday pay, vacation hours, anything like that.
So even though, and the reason is that in the documents that you submitted to me, like for example, I'm looking at the county surveyors and it's at .6, so you have the full salary scope and then you have the .6 for the total amount of their salary. And then instead of the .6 of the 2,080 of 1,248, it's 920. I'm having difficulty understanding, no matter what, we're hiring somebody and paying a full salary for 2,080 hours, there's always supposed to be a lunch, there's always supposed to be breaks, there's always supposed to be holidays and weekends, but the salary is based on 2,080. And when we don't use 2,080, then that means that the hourly wage that we're asking folks to pay is higher than the actual wage divided by 2,080, which I need better understanding of that.
No, I'll let you go for now.
Well, it includes the holiday pay vacation because those are benefits that have been approved for the county employees, so we need to get reimbursed somehow for those. Other than that, I believe Public Works does include overhead in their calculation, so that's not just paying for the individual who's doing the work, but everybody else who has any interaction, the accountants, the supervisory staff, anything like that.
Don't mind, I'm going to call Mr. Carter behind you.
So the other rate that you charge to an individual or as your fee, you have to get down to the actual potential hours that are going to be worked in a year that can be billed in essence. And each one of those billable hours, if you reach said number of hours, it needs to cover the entire salary with those vacation, holiday and sick and any potential overhead for pencils all the way down to your desk. That's how a rate is set for an hourly rate, charged to, not necessarily just the public, but just to a customer. Because those fees are front-facing to cover all of the indirect costs as well. So for the Public Works, the reason why it's all the way down to the 900 number is at the very beginning where it only said .6 of their salary, it's because right off the top, we're expecting 40% to be general fund. Only public facing to cover 60% of their salary. So that's where you get down to only the 60% and then divided by the 920. That 920 comes from taking out, you have to pay for sick, vacation, salary. And then they actually have a time study to explain what their non-billable hours are. So they have a lot of work on maps or things like that at the front counter, which is not direct billable, but that is still time that has to be covered by fees because it is a front-facing department. And if you pull out, we're about, I think it's about 60% of the two surveyors' times are the front counter and those type of things that aren't billable. That's why the hourly billable hours are all the way down at 960 or 920.
Well, I appreciate the submission of greater detail.
And I'd be happy to talk to you more.
And I think I need to continue the conversation. I see our fees going up, I see our costs going up and that's for everybody. And eventually it's, it's not the wrong thing to do. The easy thing is to increase our wages, which eventually always comes back down on the folks that we're trying to engage and potentially costing and pricing out to be able to engage in some of the things that they want to do, which potentially leads them to doing things without ever approaching us in the first place. It's a complicated balance and I obviously need to learn more and I am going to move forward today, but it's definitely something I need to dive deeper into because it feels awkward to say, here's your full salary, but we're going to make you pay a higher hourly wage because there's vacations and other things versus dividing it by 2,080, which is the full salary. And from a layman perspective, which I'm absolutely coming from here, which would be the perspective the public would walk in and ask, if you get paid $100,000 and there is 1,000 hours, you know exactly what you're supposed to pay, but then there's all these little changes involved. And I'd like to better understand it so I can better explain it. Because right now I don't understand it enough to be able to explain. But thank you again for further information, I'm going to be requesting a little bit more because I am looking for some of the time studies just to see what exactly those look like, how those are engaged with the actual tasks that we're doing. Because again, law requires that we have those. I know that I did request those, I didn't get those, but I did get further information than I have in past years. So appreciate the progress and I will evolve in my understanding.
Any further comments or questions? All right, let's open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item?
Christopher Allen with the Otter Controller County Clerk. Yes, you were right Supervisor Green, those numbers were transposed in the environmental impact reports. It should be the 4,100.
He ran down here and he's not even breathing hard. Thank you very much. Anything further? All right, bringing it back to the board for action.
Offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye. Thank you. Let's go and move on to, I'm going to skip a few. We're going to start with item 7.6, Report to the Board Regarding the Lake County Behavioral Health Services' Revenue and Expenditures and Loan Status. And if I'm correct, we are pulling this item and, no?
No, changed? Not this one?
Okay. Please come on up.
Thank you.
And we have Director Jones and her team.
Thank you Mr. Chair, and I believe, maybe I said that item, but really what I, I think I meant the item after for Heritage Joke Hospital. Anyways, about a month ago, a little over a month ago, Behavioral Health Services requested a short-term loan of $3 million from the General Fund and also approval to move forward with a $1 million loan from the Department of Social Services realignment funds. As it stands, we have borrowed and nearly expended all of the $3 million and we're completing an MOU with DSS to tap into the remaining $1 million. So here with me today, I have Amber Madero, who is our Fiscal Program Manager, as well as Deputy Director of Administration Christine Andress, to provide an update about the status of Medi-Cal reimbursement, which is the reason why we don't have money, because we are a business that runs on Medi-Cal dollars. And so I am going to put them on the spot to provide an update on some reimbursement status and where we're headed.
So according, sorry, according to CalMesa's Billing Overview Dashboard, total billed successfully, which means claims went through to the state, totals $4.5 million for mental health. Total with payer decision means the state's educated the claims, we should be receiving money, is $1.4 million. So as you can see, there's a discrepancy between those two numbers. Total that we've received of the $4.5 million is $1.3 million. So that is what's actually been received back from the state. We've been able to post the payments. That's for the mental health program.
And then Amber, were there other claims that are still stuck in the system that are even greater than that, which we haven't been able to push to billing yet because of errors on the EHR vendor side?
Yes, so the total service value of services provided, according to our electronic health record, is $9.91 million. Total charges is $8.3 million. Total charges that have no errors is $8.27 million. So a lot of that discrepancy between what we've received and what is valued by the state is related to the issues with their system, not reading the claims properly. There's around $11,000 of charges that have errors that we've billed up that are being currently worked on by accounting staff to correct errors. First, the SUDS program. We have $5.94 million of total service value. Total charges is $5.93 million. Total charges with no errors is also $5.93 million. So that's a little, it's a little bit easier, less complicated service errors to fix. Total billed to the state for SUDS is $3.9 million. Total with payer decision is $432,500 and we've received $412,000 of that. And that is for the period of July 1, '23 through 4/22/24.
So as you can see, still a significant delay in what's being held up and what's been reimbursed to us. We did receive a couple of large reimbursements and that had given us some hope, like, okay, it's starting to flow, they're starting to get the issues fixed and it's halted again. So I have drafted an email. We've been speaking with executive team at the Department of Healthcare Services, so their Director of Finance, Chief of Medicaid Staff, who are responsible for this, who are happy to point out to us that we're in the same boat with all other counties. And so there's definitely some advocacy that's going to be coming forth again from our department, probably involving California Behavioral Health Directors Association, as well as potentially CSAC. I do not personally feel that, I don't feel that they're taking this serious enough, especially for a smaller department that doesn't have huge reserves to draw on and we're not a big county. So, you know, a million dollars to us is a big deal, but it's not a big deal when you have a multi-billion dollar budget. So that's going to be up to us, myself, to do more advocating to make sure that these claims come through.
And just to add to that, this allows us to view the state as a whole and it pretty closely mirrors what we're seeing as far as our data. So their total, the total billed throughout the state of California is $206 million. Total with payer decision is only $70.7 million and of that, only $35.5 million has been paid to the counties in California.
I believe that was the bulk of our presentation, so happy to address any questions to the best that we're able. best that we're able.
Are there any questions or comments? I do have a question for you. I know I helped to connect you with Zhou Li from CSAC.
Yeah.
And I know you were trying to watch the words you chose. Is it a belief that CSAC is not as helpful in the sense that if Riverside was having the same type of advocacy that they would move, or if LA had the same level of advocacy, or is it the state itself?
It's the state itself. I took my foot off the gas, so to speak, with pursuing advocacy efforts in light of the fact that we had a large payment posted, and so I thought, okay, all right, I don't want to, you know, go ruffling feathers if it looks like the issue is resolving, but it doesn't appear that it, you know, that didn't turn into a steady stream as I had hoped. So I don't, no, it's on behalf of the state. And unrelated to this, but related to payment in general, is the fact that we actually, for our substance use disorder side, which is not the deficit side, again, but, you know, could be potentially if we can't get some reimbursements flowing, we're still owed money from the state from 2021 for New Life claims. It's only about, only, in air quotes, $500,000, which again, it's easy for the state to put off because that's nothing to them, but it's a big deal to us. And so it isn't CSAC, it isn't CBHDA. It is with the state, and we are just simply not a priority.
Right. And I know that I asked you specifically about that contract because I knew it was a big dollar contract, just to see where we are with costs versus reimbursement. And it's definitely something to keep an eye on and hoping to see that opening up. I see a pen go up. Vice Chair Crandall.
This is a member of concern at RCRC as well. The other rural counties have this issue. I'm going there tomorrow. I'll make sure I touch base with some of the others to see if they'll, not if, they already are saying these things, so.
Yeah, we're not alone. There is a lot of discussions about this with counties. I don't know, you know, it's hard to get a global sense of how other counties like balance their books and make ends meet, but I'm guessing that they may have similar struggles. Not that it lessens our struggles here or makes it any less impactful, because it is, it's a huge issue, and it's concerning that the state's timeline for reimbursing counties, and you're asking counties to do so much work, and you're putting all this pressure on counties through CalAim and all these other initiatives. And the current administration has a lot to say about behavioral health, and we're happy for the support, but it really needs to be support, and it hasn't really felt like that because I don't know how to run a business without getting paid timely. That's just not a thing that I know how to do. I don't know.
Just not the way it works.
I don't know how.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, just comment on the letter. You said you're going to be drafting a letter at this point?
Yes. Another one. We've already spoken with CBA, or, excuse me, Department of Healthcare Services Financial Executive Team. And I do recognize and appreciate that you have to be a very squeaky wheel to get their attention, and so we're going to continue to be that squeaky wheel, to the extent that, you know, if we need to travel in person to go meet with somebody in person, if that makes more of an impact, we certainly will.
Excellent. And I recommend getting the chair involved with that, CAO, simple phone calls, you know, absolutely, that advocacy definitely helps. Showing up at someone's doorstep definitely brings a little more pressure to it.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Just a quick question, just because I don't have a picture or an image to help me with this. Are we seeing the problem growing as far as the deficit that we're in, in the sense that we're owed more and more and more per month? Or are we seeing it somewhat shrinking and it just not shrinking fast enough to be able to cover the needs and bottom line of behavioral health?
What do you think, Amber?
I would say that it's shrinking, but not to the speed or level that I would feel comfortable.
Yeah, fast enough.
We did, since March, we've received just over 1 million in payments for Medi-Cal on the mental health side. Just a few days ago, we received a million-dollar check on the substance use disorder side, but the issue that we're running into them with is the issuance of an 835, which allows us to allocate where that payment needs to go. So we're getting this money with no ability to post it to the accounts that it needs to go to with a response of, you'll receive the 835 in four to six weeks.
Basically, it ties up your money even further because it's essentially a backwards invoice, where like, here's where you apply those payments to, that you billed to, and without that, we can't do anything with that money. So I also believe, I know that the lift with CalAim payment reform was extremely heavy for us. It was heavy on the state side, and so to me, this is all resultant of that. And just as much as we've been on a very steep learning curve trying to figure this out, albeit as painful as New Life was, that actually put us in a good position to deal with some of this because that was also very complex. The state are also human beings, and I recognize that, and they are also on a steep learning curve. So it just is unfortunate all the way around to, I don't want to say the blind leading the blind, but that kind of is what it feels like sometimes.
It's been an upheaval for us and for the state as far as processing after payment reform.
I would say if it's decreasing, that's at least a positive direction.
It is.
So I got to take the silver lining where the silver lining is, but absolutely, let's make sure that we keep advocating and keep pushing for that. I know I went to one of the Prop 1 sessions over at the conference I just went to, and the individuals at the table said, here's the list of all the things that have changed in behavioral health over the last 10 years. It would be nice if we could just get a two, three, five-year period where there's no changes, because all of these changes eventually hit barriers because not every change is smooth. And we end up having to change the way we do our work and change the way that we receive the funding and access to funding, and it just adds more hurdles than it's, the idea is to help, but it's also complicating things. So appreciate the update, and it sounds like it's going in the right direction, and happy to keep pushing any way that I can, and I'm sure all of us would be willing to help if that is needed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate it. And of course, I want to just give a special shout out, you know, to the CAO's office, Stephen Carter. They're exceptionally helpful, understanding. We have a great admin team, and we will be coming back in a month.
Thank you.
One last follow-up question, and tell me if I'm off base here. Do have a lobbying firm, correct, that we brought on board, and, you know, that's what they're there for, to lobby on behalf of the county, and this is a big issue for us. So just putting it out there.
Yes.
Because they can be there. That's why we're utilizing them.
There was consensus to ask the lobbyist group to look into the unpaid billables for mental health and for substance abuse.
Thank you.
Substance use disorder.
We'll take whatever help we can get.
Thank you for that. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing nothing in Zoom, and no one stepping up to the microphone. That will conclude. We did give consensus, and so we will go ahead and move on to the next item. Considerate, 7.7, consideration of amendment number one to the agreement between the County of Lake and BHC Heritage Oaks Hospital Incorporated for acute inpatient psychiatric hospital services and professional services associated with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalization in the amount of $175,000 for fiscal year 2324, and authorize the board chair to sign. Director Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was actually the item that I wanted to pull, and I apologize for getting my numbers messed up there. So we will be bringing this item back at a later date. I just do want to give a heads up that it will be a slightly larger amount. And one thing we're seeing with our mobile crisis services that went live January 1st is that we are seeing an increase in our hospitalizations. We can talk more about that at a later date. It's an interesting consequence if you will, but anyways, this is, we'll be bringing this back.
All right, so we are going to pull this item for a later agenda, and I'm going to open it up for public. Any comments on the pulling of the item? I see nothing in Zoom. Everyone's rushing to the microphone, and so we'll go ahead and move on. Item 7.8, consideration of amendment number three to the agreement between the County of Lake and the Smith Waters Group in the amount of $210,000 for patient rights advocacy services for fiscal year 2223, 2324, and 2425. Director Jones.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chair. This is part of our calculated costs to make it through to the end of the fiscal year. So when we previously bought a budget proposal that was embedded in the loan previously discussed, this was part of that understood cost of doing business. The reason that we're seeing an increase in these patients' rights advocacy services is because, look for one, this is a multi-year contract. And so effective January 1 of 2023, a law went into place that required us to do hearings for people who are placed on a 5150, and we believe that their hold should be renewed after 72 hours, and we are required to conduct a hearing where they have representative, they have counsel and a patients' rights advocate present. And so due to their increased responsibilities of attending to those hearings, we have seen an increase in cost. Of course, whenever possible, we do not want to extend holds or stack holds, as it's called, that is not desired. But you have already been aware of the lack of acute bed placements, which impacts our ability to timely place people. So whenever we do that, just please know that it's to ensure patient safety. So that is the nature of the beast here with this contract. We had previously gone out to bid for these services. I don't believe that we need to go out to bid again. I don't believe that we will find a cheaper or better service. So that is, anything else that you two ladies would want to add? Okay, that's what I got for this one.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? And just real quick, this is not a reimbursable service. This is, I want to say, a required service that obviously has a great benefit to those that are looking to receive those services.
Yes, it's an unfunded mandate.
We had a long conversation about that this past week as well. All right, looking for public comment on this item. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no hands in Zoom and no one in the chamber. Bringing it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve amendment number three to the agreement between the County of Lake and the Smith Waters Group in the amount of 210,000 for patient rights advocacy services for fiscal years 2223, 2324, 2425, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Our next item, health services, consideration and discussion of contract with HS GovTech Solutions, Inc. for the license, configuration, support, and hosting of the Lake County Environmental Health Database Management Software for an amount not to exceed $400,093.21, and authorize chair to sign. We have Director Arton and Director Wetherby. You're doing the rounds?
I can't help myself.
Thank you. We needed that. Would you like to speak in the microphone, please?
Thank you for having us. Board, we are bringing to you a new software for environmental health. Our current software is, to use the word aging would be underselling it. It was originally designed for Windows 2000, for those who remember it. The software has become obsolete in so, in a way that we don't have anybody who actually knows the programming language to be able to fix it when it breaks. It is no longer carried by their original developer, and they have moved on to a new software, which we couldn't use. So we have gone out to RFP. We selected a software. We are looking at HS GovTech, otherwise known as HealthSpace colloquially. This software is used by up to 10 counties in the state and growing. A lot more counties are slowly moving to this software. This is a critical need for my division to be able to operate. We have too many delays in our permitting process, too many delays in standard, easy things like inspections and so forth, because our software is broken. So we are bringing this software solution to you, and I hope that you agree with me, it's so desperately needed. Please, 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 let me have software that works.
We had IT involved from the beginning.
Yes. We did have a question earlier, was whether or not we went through the tech committee. We did not. That was the simple answer. However, we have done so now, and it was determined that our software will not impact any other county department or the county's IT department as well.
Perfect.
Standalone.
Thank you very much for that response as well. Any comments or questions regarding this item? Supervisor Green?
Just a quick question. It appears to be a five-year contract, and when other departments bring contracts, sometimes they label them by fiscal year. So is this just five-year out the gate? Or have you broken this down between fiscal years?
We have, there are two fees that are associated with this. So we have our initial setup fee, which is going to be $140,000. We have arranged the contract at a 50% payout on the initial fees, with the remaining 50 being tied to milestones for implementation. And then the annual fees are included in that $400,000 over the next five years. It starts at $42,000 and then goes up 6% each year over the course of the five-year contract. And that's where we bring the total fee over five years to $400,000.
Any other questions? Appreciate you bringing this to us. No matter if we say yes or no, we're still ahead of the FAA who's
You want to say yes.
1970s. But I think technology has an absolute place for some of the things that we just discussed earlier, which is, does it make our life maybe more efficient in the work that we do? Or maybe we can reduce some of the fees that we're asking folks to pay based on the fact that we can get it done so much faster with upgraded technology? So I think it's always good to upgrade, and I saw in there is training as well. I think that's probably one of the most important aspects of any new software. And so I look forward to hearing how that goes and how implementation works.
Training specifically was added into this contract for all user groups, not just inspectors, so that at every level of interaction with this software, even our admin people will have training on how to do their work more efficiently. My front staff people, it was built into that contract, so that $400,000 also covers. It will not be a separate charge.
Yeah, no, it's good to know the software rather than to learn as you fly it.
Yeah, yeah, we've learned the hard way that that doesn't work.
Anything further? And let's open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Please comment up to the mic or raise your hand. And seeing none in either chamber, let's bring it back to the board for action.
I move that we approve the contract with HS GovTech Solutions, Inc. license, configuration, support, and hosting of the Lake County Environmental Health Database Management Software for an amount not to exceed $400,093.21, and authorize the chair to sign.
We have, we have a motion and a second and a smile. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Welcome to 2024.
Yay, and you also get a free dance on my way out. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Moving on to item 710, consideration of resolution, amending resolution number 2023-117, establishing position allocations for fiscal year 2324, budget unit number 2111, public defender. And Mr. Carter, I'm going to pass it on to you.
All right, thank you, Board. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So the Public Defender's Office is requesting the position allocation chart to be amended to add five new public defender attorneys, and that can be in the range of one, two, three, or senior, which has a wide range of financial implications, and also adding one public defender investigator, one, two, classification, as well as an additional legal administrative assistant or senior classification. Oh, it's up there, cool. So as you can see on the screen, from the position title, Public Defender One is a grade D-38, and the step one is 3474 up to step five, which is 4223. I don't want to go too deep into the numbers, but I will state that with the approved budget for 2324, these positions were actually already budgeted for. It just wasn't in the position allocation yet. We basically presented a hybrid budget for 2324 that was partial staff, partial contract, and this fits within the acceptable range of, even if all of them were hired at step five, we have the financial ability to sustain these staff members. Other than that, I will say that in, for 2324, since I know any new positions are all money-related on whether we can increase or not, in the Public Defender budget unit, the overall budget is just over 3.5 million. We've only spent 1.6 million. So there's actually almost 1.9 million still available. That's where there is plenty of budget available for this, and that means we haven't quite gotten to the staffing that we planned for during the hybrid. But this is supposed to correct this through 2425.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? All right, let's open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Please either come up to the mic or raise your hand in Zoom. Bring it back to the board. And just real quick question, one I just thought of. I know I've been seeing the positions being flown. I take it this is the precursor to actually going through the interview processes and eventually providing a proposal to those that have been chosen through the process?
Correct. So there's already been three misdemeanor attorneys, position allocations that have been offered. This would expand the ability to offer for felony.
Yeah. Perfect.
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you very much. Next, we have 711, and I believe it will be Mr. Carter and Ms. Samick on this one. Consideration of the Classification, Compensation, Recruitment, and Retention Committee, 2324, Reclassification, Cycle Findings, and Recommendations.
710. He said 711.
We are on 711. Did I change on my?
No, mine says 711 is CCR.
Oh, and mine doesn't. Mine says 710.
Either way, we're in the ballpark.
Okay.
Ms. Samick?
Good afternoon. Pam Samick, HR Director. So today we are discussing the Classification and Compensation Recruitment and Retention Committee recommendations for the 2324 reclassification request. I don't know if I should stop or jump in. Are there? Okay, go. All right. So the assessor recorder submitted a request and justification that the committee did not agree with because it is a salary and not a reclassification request. I won't go into his complete justification because you guys have read that, plus a 2.5% advanced appraiser ad pay, which the committee did not agree with. So I don't know if you want to stop after each department or go through all.
Let's, I don't see any pens up, and no pens means move on.
Okay. Auditor Controller made a request to reclassify a position from a property tax coordinator to a property tax manager. The committee recommends that we approve this request because it is a reclassification request, and this is going from an hourly position to a management position.
And just to clarify, that means pulling a, are we pulling the classification or creating a new one and not pulling?
Pulling the classification because that old classification will no longer exist. It will be replaced by this manager role.
Okay, so we are pulling a classification out of one of the MOUs that we have a contract with?
Correct.
Just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
How many managers then is, are in that department now?
I would have to run a report. I don't know offhand, to be honest. Do you know offhand?
I do.
Okay.
So that would make the fourth position, but it'll be the third filled. So there's the elected, and then two chiefs, and then this property manager, property tax manager, sorry.
And an assistant that's not filled.
Correct.
Well, it's in there.
So theoretically, there's five available.
Behavioral Health made a recommendation to do all of their clinical RNs and counselors. This was not a reclassification, but a salary request. So the committee voted to deny this request because it's not reclassification. It's just a request for an increase of salary to all these positions.
Before you go any further, since we were requested, I would, I'd like to go back one because we were asked to add the financial implications of these changes, and I believe that should be publicly stated, even though it's in the memo. So for the property tax coordinator, the difference in salary is $18,844.80 a year. And then you do the PERS and FICA, so it would be a total of $24,677 difference year over year. So just want to make the public and your board aware.
Lars Yuan requested a reclassification from landfill manager, and the committee recommended approving this. Total cost for salary is $11,835.20. Total cost to the budget is $15,498.19. The Register of Voters asked to reclass.
Question?
Sure.
I just want to point out that in the second text box where the increase to the budget is shown, the title continues to be listed as landfill manager, but the actual proposed class title is integrated solid waste. So is that correct title?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Register of Voters asked to get a salary increase to three positions. The committee did not recommend this request because it was a straight salary request, not a reclassification request. Special Districts requested to reclassify their CMOM coordinators. The committee, I did that here, too. The committee recommended to approve this recommendation there, and the cost to the budget for a CMOM Coordinator 1 would be $4,129.20. Total cost to the budget, $5,407.18. For the CMOM Coordinator 2, it would be a difference of $2,246.40. Total cost to the budget would be $2,941.66. The committee did recommend this, this request. The treasurer tax coordi, or treasurer tax collector made a recommendation to reclass five positions. We recommended the reclass of the accountant 1, 2 to auditor tax. The total cost of that is $4,659.20. Total cost of the budget is $18,303.66. They asked to reclassify their accountant 2 to an accountant 2 auditor tax. Total difference is $5,058.40. Total cost to the budget for that is $6,754.93. They also asked to reclassify their collection supervisor to an accountant 1, 2 senior. The cost for this is $3,140.80. Total cost to the budget is $4,112.88. Total cost for their allocated positions to the budget for these three positions, or these three, yes, positions would be $29,171.47. The committee recommended these because these are reclasses, and it more closely mirrors what they're, what they're doing. The auditors or the treasurer tax also requested two other salary increases, which the committee recommended for nonapproval because they were straight salary increases only. And that is the bulk of the request.
Anything further, Mr. Carter? No? Any questions on this item? So obviously, last time we had a conversation, it was requested to bring this back in open session. My perspective has not changed, so I will be abstaining from the vote today. I think this needs to still be closed session. I also want to speak to, and I apologize for picking on this one, but it's the only one that I feel that I can speak to, as it's management to management. When you look at the landfill manager going to solid waste, it says here currently the landfill manager supervises six permanent heavy equipment operators, two permanent weightmasters, and approximately five extra help staff throughout the year. The supervision would remain the same with the new position. I added that little part. With the proposed increase to include supervision of a staff services specialist who currently reports directly to the public services director. And the cost to the budget is $15,000 for an additional one supervision. And I just, I, I don't know if there was a class and comp that was done to look at other counties, what are the costs, or if it was just a proposal and it was a yes or no. I just, I see these types of things within the document, and I feel like there's a loophole for changing a position title versus looking at changing the salary, which allows for these to come back and say, it's not a salary change, it's a brand-new position. And I struggle with this process versus, again, the closed session. And I'll leave it at that. Just
There were additional changes to the job description, which I would be happy to send back to you. So it wasn't just supervising the staff analyst. It was reporting in a myriad of activities that they would be taking on in addition. That's in the job description edits that's not in his ask that we went over during the class and comp committee.
Okay. And I appreciate that, but it's still just something that I needed to express on some of the things that are on here that I struggle with. And if there's no further, Vice Chair Crandall?
Yes, I see here, and I see that there was a denial for the behavioral health requests due to the request, but solely a request for salary increases. Are all these positions filled as of now? I didn't see if it said that.
No, there are some vacancies within those roles, but the class and comp committee has traditionally, and if you look at the policy, it's not meant just to adjust salaries. We have other mechanisms for that. And because this was a straight ask for salary and not a reclass, we said no.
I see. Okay. Reclass, not increase. Okay, got it. I just, I find those positions important, but I get the justification. I understand that. I'm just making sure that I emphasize that. But I just, it's important for behavioral health because we just had a testimony today of somebody who benefited from the build program, who was in a situation. So I just, I know that has nothing, no weight here, but I just want to make sure that I emphasize that, but I understand. Thank you.
And that is consistent with past practices. We just said no to social services, kind of for a similar reason, that it was a straight salary ask and not a reclassification request.
Yeah, no, I get it. It has no bearing here in this situation. It would be further down the line. So, okay, thanks.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, don't need a lengthy thing because I know this is not the agenda item, but for the denials in here, including those for the registrar that were deemed more of a compensation increase, but as stated in the request by the registrar, it made an argument, it wasn't a winning argument, but that in fact, they were seeking a change in classification based on, you know, the work duties described by the registrar. So that got bumped down to this larger class and comp 2.0 or benching situation. So, and again, and that wasn't the only one. There were several other requests in here that also got shot down as straight-up salary increases. So again, I just want to signal, I did kind of struggle during this meeting as far as understanding the process. I dare say that more than one department head struggled with this process, and I don't know if that is something with our policy or the form that they're directed. You know, I know they're under the gun to get this stuff done before budget. That said, if it got bumped down to this larger classification effort, you know, it kind of, to me, kind of sucked some of the air and definitely sucked some of the proposed changes out of this effort. So, and I don't know really to what I'm saying, but you know, do we have a timeline for whatever this latest benching thing is going to be, and when are we going to hear about when department?
I think we should discuss that offline, that particular topic.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if we look at the register of voters, it was a title change, no change in the actual duties. She just didn't agree with how they've been classified since the original comp and class study, but had an opportunity after that next cycle to review that. So you can't just change the title and expect an increase. So again, that's why the committee as a whole voted no, because it was a title change with no changes to the job description.
Okay. And when are we going to see those benches in this later process?
I'd really like to talk about that offline.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan, welcome.
Thank you for considering our office's request before you today to approve providing equal pay to the accountants in our office. I do wish to provide additional information about the Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector position that was not included in the reclassification recommendation. The Treasurer Tax Collector's office has the unique distinction of having shrunken size over the last 20 years. The only comparable department I'm aware of has had positions cut rather than added during that time. In the meantime, there has been a massive expansion of duties with limited resources. We've taken on the cannabis cultivation tax, cannabis business tax, TOT enforcement. We have all court order debt, deferred comp, full-scale investment program, and tax auctions on a scale beyond what any other small county has done, as far as I'm aware. There are not many Treasurer Tax Collector offices in the state that actually run all these programs, but we do here. Our office has suffered from constant turnover, especially in the last several years. Our pay scales were lower than comparable positions in other county departments without real opportunity for career growth. Other county departments with comparable functions were specially adjusted while this office was left behind. The damage done over time by this situation cannot be overstated, as a significant number of staffs left our department for better opportunities in other county departments. The Board of Supervisors took significant steps to solve this problem last year when it increased the compensation of accounting technicians in our office provide equal pay. The recommendation before you today to provide equal pay to the accountants in our office is a critical next step, so we really thank you for considering that. The Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector position has had to learn and now help manage all of the new programs referenced above. We added those new duties to the proposed job description, which I understand has been rejected by the committee. I'm not really clear where that leaves us going forward. This really doesn't make sense to me. I feel that the same logic that was applied to the other changes made to peer departments shares that same basis, and for the steps your board has already taken. And I just want to point out sort of where things have left now. The Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector salary scale has now fallen behind the number three position in the auditor's office after all these adjustments have been made. The salary scale for this position now overlaps the number four, number five, and potentially the number six position in that office, especially considering the proposal today. So I don't begrudge anyone those increases. I applaud all efforts to move staff salaries forward, and I get we can't control external factors like our pay compared to other agencies, but I think we can control the internal imbalances, and that's what I'd really like consideration on. So I'm hoping that you please do not fix the problem for the remaining part of the staff without addressing the Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector. I just feel like the same logic applies to the duties she's performing, especially now after all the new programs we've had to take on. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Supervisor Pisca?
So the, is it the auditors department that is closely aligned traditionally? that is closely aligned traditionally with the salaries of the Treasury Tax Collector?
That's what he's referring to, yes.
Okay, because there was a mention of similar departments and positions.
That's why the position is basically the Auditor-Treasurer type.
Auditor-Tax.
On the request.
Okay. But is the Assistant Tax Collector that far below the comparable auditor positions?
Yes, it is. Pretty sure.
Yes?
Yes. But this particular.
No, I know that's not the conversation we're having today.
Yeah.
Sounds like we're going to need to have that conversation at some point. And it would be helpful when we get to that point to see some side-by-side comparisons for what should be comparable and equitable.
And that's what comes with.
The next.
Steps.
Next steps, okay.
Any further comments, questions?
I know it was mentioned, a comparison with behavioral health and social services. I see them as different in a way. And the reason I say that is because one is upstream, one is meaning them like right where they're at, at their point that they need assistance. But I understand, again, that this is about a position allocation. So I'm not, I'm just emphasizing that and making sure I specify why I brought this up.
Behavioral health and public health have a lot of very similar positions.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have two last questions, just to clear things up. On the last option in Accounting I reclass to Accounting I Auditor/Tax, is that what it's currently called? Is Accounting I Auditor/Tax? Or is it just Auditor right now and we're adding tax?
We're adding Auditor/Tax so that it's the same classification that can be used in either department without adding another position in a series.
But the Accounting I Auditor already exists.
Correct.
We're adding tax, but it's not changing the salary of the Accounting I Auditor?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure on that. And then the last one, and I appreciate the comments made by Vice Chair Crandall about behavioral health. Mental Health RN, in my opinion, based on the vacancy list that you send me from time to time, is not a position that exists. When I typed that up, I don't see it. I see an LVN. I see clinician, but I don't see RN itself. And so if that's not a salary change and it's a creation of a new.
It's not. I think it's just a, that, this chart is the way they requested it. We do have an RN in mental health. I would have to look up the exact title, but it is this pay code.
And it might not be something that's on the position allocation chart. That doesn't mean the position doesn't exist within our system.
I know that in the vacancy list, it shows all the positions that have been allocated, whether they're filled or open. So I get to see all of the allocations that are there. But what you're saying is it might just be a job description that's somewhere in the existence.
Used to be there.
It just hasn't been allocated as that position, okay.
I want to say, I think it's called a Community Health Nurse. I'll look it up for you. It's just when they put in their request, I listed it how they put it in. So I'll look up the title for you.
I would definitely appreciate that so I can link it up together. If there's nothing further, let's open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Raise your hand in Zoom, coming up to the mic here in the chamber. Seeing none, let's bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, do I need to make an amendment to? Did we make a name change on here? Was there? No?
About the solid waste.
Yeah, the solid waste.
I think it's okay on the resolution.
Resolution's fine.
Actually, there is no resolution.
There is no resolution, so.
Recommended action?
I move to approve the CCRR class and comp, the CCRR recommendations, and authorize the Human Resource to initiate the meet and confer process with the applicable employees' associations as needed. Right?
And it would be as amended?
I think, as amended.
Yes.
Yeah, since it's the only thing we have.
Okay.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? I abstain. Real quick, this will come back as a resolution for the ones that don't need to go through meet and greet.
Meet and greet.
Meet and confer.
Greet and meet, meet and greet.
Go ahead.
Yes, it will. Once we have the meet and confer process done, it will, it will come back to you.
At the very least, the position title changes will have to take effect on the position allocation chart.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
And let's go with 7.3, Consideration of Draft Ordinance Repealing Urgency Ordinance 3113, Amending Ordinance 3110 Prohibiting Water Hauling to Unpermitted Cannabis Cultivation Sites. Is this the one that we are pulling for further conversation at a later date?
Yes, Chair, there was a clerical error by yours truly, and this is mislabeled. So just for clarity, I'd like to bring this back to a later agenda.
All right. Any comments on continuing this item? Open it up for public comment. Any comments on continuing this? Seeing none in Zoom, seeing none in the chamber. We'll move on to item 7.4, Consideration of Recision of Urgency Ordinance 3106 Requiring Land Use Applicants to Provide Enhanced Water Analysis During a Declared Drought Emergency. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, as your board is aware, on April 2nd, we terminated the local drought emergency declaration. And one of the side effects of that was to sunset two urgency ordinances that were passed subsequent to the passage of the emergency declaration. Although the sunset clause in Ordinance 3106 is, I'm told anyway, informed by Accounting Council self-executing, when it comes to how we track our ordinances in Granicus and Muni Code, it would not automatically display within those systems that the ordinance was no longer in effect. So according to Accounting Council, what we can do, as in the recommended action, is just formalize the rescission of Urgency Ordinance 3106 by a motion, and that is the recommended action.
All right. Any comments or questions on this? Seems easy enough. Moving on to public comment. Anyone have a comment? Please come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Margot Cambara. I am not against cannabis cultivation. I am for sustainability and resilience. The emergency nature of the drought no longer exists, but the action prompted by Ordinance 3106 warrants continuation as policy, specifically requiring hydrology reports as part of commercial cannabis cultivation permit application reflects Vision 2028 value, preserving the well-being of residents. Water is essential for life. Relying on a comprehensive groundwater management plan that accounts for drought management and the interest in hauling water for commercial agriculture can help safeguard groundwater. Rescinding Ordinance 3106 without making hydrology reports a routine part of the county's groundwater management exposes a gap and a vulnerability. The long-term impact of water demand on Lake County aquifers by commercial cannabis cultivation is not known. Assuming that well recharge and aquifer recharge will continue indefinitely while under greater water demand is not supported by data. Hydrology reports can be a tool to help the county protect residents from catastrophic failure of wells and aquifers. These reports can help the county take proactive action. Retaining the requirement for these reports reinforces the county's commitment to the well-being of residents. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Just want to let you know, while I appreciate the comments that you made, our discontinuing of the drought emergency, these ordinances were tied directly to those emergency, to that emergency. And so already, they have been discontinued, these ordinances. This is more of a formality of being able to take it off. I know there has been conversation that hydrology reports can still be pursued by the department because it's within their discretion to make those requests. I can't speak directly to the drought management plan, whether or not that will continue. But I will speak directly and say, I don't think people put the effort in it that I had hoped that they would as they basically said how to be good stewards of water on an everyday basis, not how they would look at their project on an actual drought basis. I never saw anyone saying, I'm going to reduce from 10 acres to eight acres or anything like that. It was always about just good watering practices. So I don't know that we were receiving what I was hoping to receive from those plans. But I just wanted to explain that to you, and I think that we should pay attention whether or not hydrology reports are continued or not because that could lead to further actions. I know that one of the reasons I helped bring the emergency ordinance in the first place was all we were seeing were well reports, and some of them were like 1972. And to me, that was just not enough to understand the current status of the water that was going to be used for a project. But again, appreciate your comment, and thank you for being here.
You have someone on.
Oh, we have Director Turner, who probably wants to correct some of the things I may have said.
No, actually, I completely agree with you. Thank you. I just wanted to sort of echo your comments to Ms. Cambara. We do take water use very seriously. And so the rescission of that ordinance requiring hydrology studies for every single discretionary permit, I think is going to improve now that it's going to be rescinded because we still intend to use our authority that's given to us through the Chapter 21, Section 57.2G, that authorizes CDD to require all, to, yes, to require all studies that we deem necessary. And so moving forward, this department does intend to continue the hydrology report requirement for all discretionary permit applications that are not going to propose municipal water source. That would include all cannabis projects.
Thank you, Director Turner.
Thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Thank you for that clarification, Director Turner. That was news to me. This is the rescission of an urgency ordinance, and I understand why it happened. It was a serious drought in 2021. Urgency ordinances, by definition, they require four fifths vote. They don't necessarily have the same bandwidth of examination as to all the potential uses and nuances of hydrology reports and land use applications. And what I heard, it sounds like it's going to be pretty consistent up there anyway. So, and because it was an urgency ordinance, both of them, they did have the self-executing rescission clause in there when the state of emergency passed. But I want to echo Chair Sabatier's comments. It is an important discussion to have. And now that this is going to go off the books, we're right in the middle of a Lake County 2050 general plan update. We're doing area plan updates. Clearly, there may be things we need to continue to talk about. We just don't want to use an urgency ordinance as the basis to have a full employment opportunity for hydrologists. We want to put the proper bang for the buck. And if there is a project that would benefit from that analysis, then the CDD will require that. But there may be other lesser permits, zoning clearances, what have you, non-cultivation projects where hydrology reports should not be required in all instances as this urgency ordinance requires. So I think this is actually an opportunity to, again, move past the state of drought emergency and begin these longer-term discussions where we will adopt, you know, rational, long-term water management policies, both in times of plenty, as in this year, and in times of our future droughts. So that was the only purpose of this, is to just commemorate the passing of that urgency ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Guintevano, just to check in, since it requires four fifths vote to approve, does it require four fifths vote to rescind? I don't think I should be worried about that, but I just thought I'd ask.
I don't see the requirement for the four fifths vote for the rescission of the ordinance, although you are correct that four fifths vote is usually, it is required for the passage of the urgency ordinance.
Maybe next time I do an urgency ordinance, I'll write in that it requires a four fifths to rescind because that just makes sense. I think I still had a public, so please come on up. I was going to reopen it anyways, but I was trying to remember where I was.
Hi, everybody. Good afternoon. My name is Tom Lasik. I'm a resident of Lake County. My well report goes back to 1960. And I understand that this is an emergency thing, and I appreciate all that. I do want to emphasize the importance of hydrology plans, especially with things like cannabis. And as we're going to be talking, I guess, at a later date about the water truck conversation. Currently, the hydrology plans that we've gone through for the projects in our valley do state, for example, the amount of water they intend to draw. And while there's a lot of the fluff about how I'm going to be a good water steward and stuff like that, what's critical to us is how much water are they going to draw? And I think that is important data if you're going to be looking at a long-term plan for the county to know where you're drawing water, how much. Those data points are critical if you're going to put together a solid plan. So I'd encourage you, for no other reason, that the permits for major and minor-use cannabis operations that be retained, that kind of information. And especially if you're now considering, you know, letting them use water trucks because the current language that we see in the reports or in the applications are, our wells are sufficient, we don't need to use water trucks, we are going to pump this much, our wells don't go down, blah, blah, blah. Yet if you're asking for a water truck, that means you ran out of water. So what's going on? So I think it's important for the county to keep that, to keep an eye on that because we do need to know where our water's coming from. A one-size-fits-all isn't going to apply all the way around the lake. And by definition, if you're running out of water and you need a truck, that means even though, you know, a couple of months ago, we said, hey, we have plenty of water, somebody's well went dry. So anyways, you got any questions for me? That's what I wanted to present.
I appreciate the comment. And I don't think we have any questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will go ahead and close public comment. Oh, Joan, sorry. I will not close public comment.
Joan Moss, I want to say that on Wildcat Road during the drought, there were water shortages at both ends of Wildcat Road. And it doesn't concern just cannabis. It concerns vineyards and grape growing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, now I will close public comment and bring it back to the board for action.
Just last quick comment, totally technical. If Ordinance 36 had not contained a sunset clause that became effective upon the rescission of the emergency declaration, potentially a four fifths vote to rescind could be necessary. But my understanding is that it was self-executing. So if I were to guess, a simple motion to rescind So if I were to guess, a simple motion to rescind would require a majority vote. And to the concerns also stated by the audience, yeah, I get it for land use permits. We definitely want to take a look at that. But there's a whole big swath of agriculture, as Ms. Moss pointed out, that is not subject to discretionary land use permitting. And those water uses also deserve additional study as we develop these long-range plans. So I know your comments have traditionally been focused on cannabis projects, but my personal interest, as we develop a water resiliency strategy, is to address all forms of water use for all types of agriculture. And we'll see how that goes as we get farther along that path.
Looking for action.
Move to rescind urgency ordinance 3106.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. More than four fifths.
Well, it says in Rule 8, motion to rescind, any action or motion shall require four fifths vote unless notice has been given. Since we've had notice given, then it doesn't require it. But if we just would have decided to rescind right now, it takes four fifths. Like, you get what I'm saying?
Oh, so if the rescission was on a similar urgency basis?
Right, this instant. But because there was notice given for this meeting, it doesn't require.
Where'd you pull that out of?
It's on the...
On the ordinance itself?
No, it's on the Board of Supervisors, Lake County Rules of Procedures, General Protocol.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you, Vice Chair. All right, moving on to item 7.5, and I do want to make a statement that it is 2:50. Our closed session is supposed to start at 3:00. Does our process start at 3:00, or is there... Let me ask the CAO, your suggestion, should we go into closed session right now and continue our open session later, or can we finish this item at the very least and see what time we finish this item?
Let's do that.
Okay, let's take up this item. All right, consideration of resolution amending Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council boundary map. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Hopefully, this won't take too, too long. Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council, when we seeded some new members last year, we were taking a look at the original boundary as it was adopted. And technically, we appointed some people who probably shouldn't have been based on the boundary that then established, which didn't include big portions of Icoff Road, Hendricks Road, and a lot of the collector roads that serve Scotts Valley. Pardon me. So Councilmember Cornelia Seber Davis really led a very diligent effort to kind of rethink what the Scotts Valley area is. And the basic metric was, you know, give me the arterials and the collectors that, you know, basically traverse what is considered the Scotts Valley area. And we went back and forth, and I really want to thank Cornelia for her hard work. I want to thank Lon Sharp for being very patient through multiple iterations of this process. In the exhibits attached to this item, you'll see the proposed resolution. You'll see the new exhibit, A underscore V2, which really gets granular. One of the problems we had with the original map and the original Resolution 2017-27 is we ended up kind of calling it the Sharpey map. It really didn't allow you to get parcel-specific analysis of who was in and out of there. So this new map attached to the draft resolution will give us parcel-specific. We can actually look up, and additionally, you'll see a screen grab Mr. Sharp thankfully has put up on our current GIS application, which shows our municipal advisory councils, both the existing boundary and the larger proposed boundary. So I think there's a good enough visual references in here for your board to see what the existing boundary is, what the proposed boundary is. At the northern end, there does continue to be a little bit of an overlap with the Western Region Town Hall boundary, but that was there before. And although we talked back and forth, we really, I really asked the council to expand, yes, but don't look to remove any areas that were previously included. So again, this was approved by the council and recommended for approval by your board, and answer any questions you might have about that process.
Supervisor Pisca?
What's the, why is that one area in the middle kind of not that, not highlighted?
The checkerboard?
Yeah, it looks a little gerrymandering, just wondering.
It is kind of general, I mean, I've considered filling it in, and actually, if you look at Western Region Town Hall, it goes all the way up into Forest Service land. Most of those properties, including the checkerboard, is BLM. So we don't really expect a lot of applicants from those territories, and don't see any real disadvantage to that artifact being in there. It's not an occupied parcel, it's BLM land, and it seems unlikely. Similarly, a little bit south of there gets a little more into the Benmore Valley area. They're not really identified with the Scotts Valley area council. So it's kind of a mix of a, it was just kind of a weird process. So although I was tempted to fill it in, we were, I think everyone was really tired of looking at this map, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Sharp, but this was our best effort. But if, open to amendment, if that, we can certainly plug that back in. I thought about it.
Any other?
Yeah, I looked at it, and I noticed that the middle is what already is, that brown middle area is already, so it's already been there. It flares out a little bit further, but I think it's just, it works with the parcels that are included on the brown part of it, I guess you will. It just expands it out a little bit, but that's only because they're connected to those properties, so I'm not worried about it impeding on the district. At first I was, you know, I was like, wait, what's going on here? You know, it's going further into Worth, but it just attaches to the actual drawn-out first map, so it's not really anything.
And to me, it's more inclusive. I mean, technically, somebody in that overlap could serve on both regional councils, and I don't see any disadvantage to that, you know, the more the merrier. I don't know if the northern Scotts Valley area residents identify more closely with Upper Lake than they do with Lakeport. So it just seemed to expand into what is considered Scotts Valley, whether you consider it from a geographic standpoint, from the occupied territories that have street to access, or even a watershed where the BLM lands are included in there. So again, kudos to the hard work of the council and their patience with me as we went back and forth on this.
Anything further? All right. I will say it is, from my perspective, a little awkward to see overlap, but that's between you guys, not me. It's just...
It was already there.
No, I know.
Yeah, and so it just, the parcels are already there, so including the rest of the parcel doesn't hurt, because the person could still be on it.
Yeah, I recognize where the original was and where the proposed is. I just wanted to state that it's a little awkward on my position or my perspective to see that, but that is my comment. Let's open it up for public comment on this item. And seeing none, we'll bring it back. There is something real quick I do want to mention, and maybe it's something you could bring back at a later time, but when I reviewed the bylaws, it says District 4 and District 5 supervisor, which I thought was really awkward, because it's nowhere near, well, it's not far away, but it's nowhere inside District 5. It's actually inside District 3. But when you take a look at, again, I don't remember which one, the 2017-27?
I've seen that, too.
And I'm opening it up right now. And I can't do a search, but in there it says District 4, oh, right here, in number 5, under the now therefore of the original resolution in 2017. In there, it says, "Develop attainable solutions and advise the District 4 and District 5 supervisors." So not sure if you want to get rid of the District 5, or if you want to add District 3, since there's overlap, but it doesn't make sense to have District 5 right there.
Yeah, if I can, I don't have it in front of me. This is the original resolution establishing the council. Did we leave the bylaws have been amended since then? I don't know if they addressed that particular issue, but I will check.
Gotcha.
And if I find anything, but I'll take, I'll take a check of the most recent bylaws and see if that's still in there. That can certainly be amended.
Okay, then looking for action.
I offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye. Thank you very much. And with that, we are going to go into closed session. We have an 8.1, 3 p.m., public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1. 8.2, public employee import, employment, public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1. 8.3, public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1. We will continue after closed session with the remaining two items that are on our open session, but for now, we are going into closed. Thank you. Okay, I see we're back on the screen. We are back from closed session. Vice Chair Crandall, do we have any action that was taken in closed session?
Yes, we do. Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Stephen L. Carter Jr. as Interim Director of Lake County Department of Social Services, effective May 4, 2024, at existing salary.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And then we will...
Comment?
Oh, do we have a public comment? Oh, we already voted and everything. I see none in the Zoom room, and we have an empty chamber. All right, let's move on to item 7.2, I believe it is. Yes, 7.2. I'm going to share my screen, and we will attempt to do this swiftly, but still doing it appropriately. Okay, so this is our annual PEG update through our agreement that we have between the two cities and the county. This is supposed to be done in the month of April. Just to let you know, as I've been going and reading through the agreement, there are certain changes that I am going to propose that we make, and that'll come back at a later time. There are certain things that request that we submit a budget to the county by March. We're not ready by March to submit a budget, and so there's little things like that, that I just want to make sure that we are meeting the agreement that we have resolved, and so an amendment will be coming soon. Our board members have not changed greatly in the last year or so. Right now, Representative from Clear Lake is David Claffey. Representative from Lakeport is Michael Froyo. Our education representative is Kevin Mack, and I apologize, Kevin, for not fixing the typo on your name. And I am the board's representative for the County of Lake. We still have one vacancy. We are looking for somebody to join, and without being too forward, we are looking for a female participant to join our team so that we can at least create some diversity within our group. Our station manager is Thomas DeWalt, who has been holding the fort down, programming the TV station, and ensuring that all the hardware functions appropriately. And then we also have a chief editor, Adam Giordino. Our budget for 2324 that had been approved has, and it was just actually recently amended. The approved budget is $36,075. $25,000 of that, which is $15,000 for the regular support from the County of Lake. I added the $10,000 from the contract for the videography services to the municipal advisory councils. So that's $25,000 from the County of Lake, $8,000 from the City of Clear Lake, and $2,000 from the City of Lakeport. Those are just the big-ticket revenue items. Our operating budget expenses match the revenues, $36,075. Our station manager, including the $10,000 that has been provided for the videography, is $22,000. Editor is $4,800. And facilities and insurance that we pay to the City of Clear Lake, which is kind of a, washes out as an in-kind contribution, is $8,000. And they also do our annual audit for us, as well as part of their overall city audit. Our capital budget revenue, we have pass-through dollars. It's actually a surprise to me. I would assume, as we progress in the world of digital media, that we would see the cutting of the cord of cable becoming a bigger and bigger thing, but we are actually seeing increases in our pass-through dollars. It's quite a surprise to me. I thought we would see either a major drop-off, or at least some sort of drop-off, but we are still getting, it was $56,000, now we're up to over $60,000. And so what we've done is we've just allocated $60,000 that can be placed into our equipment. Capital budget is restricted on what it can be spent on. We actually spent about $15,000, $16,000, I think, on the AV unit in order to support the MACs with the videography services that we've provided. Our current activities is we support local events. We have a sound system and are able to do videography. We do support the, we have an amazing sound system and support the concerts in the park in the City of Clear Lake. We are continuously offering those same services to the City of Lakeport, Lake County. Anyone can go ahead and call us. There is a cost for using the sound equipment in order to ensure that we have a technician, because it is a high-tech sound system. We want to make sure it's used correctly, and also in order to capture some dollars to be able to put that into our bank so that we can upgrade and repair the system as needed. But if you are having a concert and you want to utilize this sound system, please do reach out to PEG, whether you're a nonprofit or a local government agency. We are also, because of our contract with the county, supporting our local MACs with the mobile AV unit. We'll discuss that a little bit later. And what we're seeing is, we started off with four of the six MACs, and eventually, the Middletown Area Town Hall took interest to the mobile AV unit and contacted PEG, and now we are also doing the Middletown Area Town Hall. And I know because of the interaction we had with the general plan at the Lower Lake Community Action Agency, that they are having some interest in making sure that PEG is also there to provide the same service. We did create new revenues because of this video, videography agreement, and in fact, it's even alerted others that were available. So the Farm Bureau has reached out to us. Lake County EDC Economic Development Corporation has reached out to us, and the Chamber of Commerce has reached out to us in order to provide similar services. And so we are expanding the knowledge of the availability of PEG services, which is great. Also, we have, oops, we have our website, lakepegTV.com, and we are doing our best to keep that updated with everything that's going on that's PEG-related. When we did the original contract for the MACs, I had promised that I would bring back some details of how things are going, and so this identifies all of the MACs that we have been doing work for. I did not put in any of the general plan stuff that was paid by a separate contract through community development, unless it happened to land on a normal day for the MACs to get these services. I know I have had discussions with admin to ensure which bucket are we using for this, and which bucket do we need to create a new contract for. And so as you can see, these are the details. We can go through those by just reviewing the presentation that's attached to our agenda. But overall, 37 total recordings, 160.5 total hours spent, total recording costs of $6,420, and an equipment lease cost of $1,850, for overall total of $8,270. And that is the cost we started in June, so we kind of had an extra month in there because we were really late in getting our equipment together and trying to get things prepared to get started. So this is for about 11 months' worth of services. I did just submit an invoice for April. There'll be another one for May and June, and there may be a need for me to come back to see if there needs to be an amendment to maybe $10,500 or $11,000 in order to ensure that we cover the costs of all the services for the year, because our contract only goes through 2324 and is a maximum, not to exceed $10,000. But I wanted to make sure and be transparent and share the level of work that we've been providing and working with the county to create better transparency, historical archives, and everything else that we had discussed when the original contract was approved. Our future activities, we're still wanting to fill in the vacant seat. We want to work with our schools. In fact, there is something in our agreement that I recognize, I didn't add it to this, that we also want to work with our library. And so I'm going to approach Christopher Veitch, our librarian, and see how it is that PEG and the library can work together. I am also throwing around some ideas with First Five. There is a monthly book, Book of the Month, and if we can get somebody who can represent a specific group that can read the book in front of the camera, we can go ahead and post those on PEG. We used to do that, not we, but First Five was doing this during COVID-19 at one point in time, inviting people to go ahead and read children's books. And I don't know if you guys received, random topic, I don't know if you guys received a book from the NACO on explaining the counties, but that, to me, is one of those books that I think would be great to read. If you haven't seen it, please look for it. They should be in your inbox. I thought it was one of the most amazing things. Sorry, side note. We want to continue to increase our operational budget. Our operational budget is where we can increase our salaries, maybe increase our staffing, things of the kind. And our capital budget is very restricted on what can be spent, and so we're very limited in the scope of work and services that we can do internally, and we want to continue to grow so we can operate at the best, highest efficiencies and levels. We want to increase our memberships and our viewerships, whether it's on YouTube or whether it's on Channel 8. We are still working to activate Lakeport PEG connection. I apologize that that is still on our future activities. There has been some pretty major upgrades that has occurred within the City of Clear Lake's studio. Here in our chamber, I believe, we're done with those upgrades, and for some reason, we got as close as everything working for Lakeport, but for some unknown reason, the sound was not coming through. So now that... So now that everyone's been upgraded, that leaves Lakeport last. And so now we can really focus on just bringing that conversation to an end and making sure that that goes live. And of course, we want to pursue partnerships. And one of those is, I just had a meeting recently with our local community radio, KPFZ. We are going to analyze, it's been approved to move forward, to at least analyze and see what the potential is. To, PEG would pay for the capital improvements to the KPFZ studio for sound and video so we can now create podcasts, use those podcasts, and put them on PEG. And obviously, KPFZ can use those podcasts however they want. We could put it on our YouTube channel, and it's going to be a voluntary thing. It doesn't have to be every single show on KPFZ as a podcast. It could just be that we get one a week that becomes a podcast that we place on PEG. But we're looking to build that relationship. And one of the things that I thought was really interesting, and we had not thought of it during our initial discussions at PEG, was KPFZ mentioned the emergency use of KPFZ. And that this would, could potentially lead to a connection, a live feed connection during emergencies. So not only is KPFZ on the radio, live with some updates on what's happening during emergencies, but also we can go ahead and utilize PEG for the same purpose. And I think that's kind of an exciting scenario, especially if we can invite folks like our sheriff or our OES to speak on behalf of the county and what's happening during those times. And so at this moment in time, that's it for our annual update and our annual report. I do want to open up for Part B of the conversation, which is, I can easily put an item on the agenda to bring a contract and look at extending services for PEG for MAC. But I kind of want to get a feel of how is that working for you guys? How do you feel about it? My thoughts were a, instead of a one-year contract, maybe looking at a three-year contract and still looking at $10,000, since I think we can do better, be more efficient. Depending, of course, if we add the BVAC to that, if that's an interest of the new municipal advisory council. But I wanted to hear from you, your thoughts on me bringing back a contract for further extension of that service. And that's my report. Supervisor Simon?
It's working well. There's no going back now. You know, we need to figure it out on the budgets, but I think a three-year contract might be a good conversation. A $10,000 a year, so a $30,000 contract you're talking about. But here are a lot of good things. You know, I know the Middletown math likes having the opportunity. There are challenges. We all know that, with whether it's Zoom or whatever wasn't working that night. But they like having the recordings, so yeah, I'm interested in having the conversation.
And just a real quick comment on that, some of the trouble that we've been having. I know one of my ideas, and it hasn't gone through yet the PEG board, but, so the video service, we can't offer without having extra funds because our operational budget is so tight. But our capital budget currently, and I apologize for not being transparent, we have $300,000 that we've collected of the pass-through. So my plan is to approach every town hall, and I know that it's not owned by the county. It would have to be a conversation with each entity that owns those town halls to see if we can upgrade their systems so that we can get better outcomes and more reliability on the way the service works when it comes to internet, when it comes to everything else. I think that it would benefit PEG, so therefore, that's a good reason for why PEG would be able to use those funds for that. And it would also benefit those, typically their local government or their local nonprofits. And so it would benefit them in other ways as well if that was something that we can approve. Obviously, that would require many, many different conversations in order to get to that. But that's one of my thoughts on how to enhance that experience and that reliability of the service.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think it's fine. The, it's been, the, we had it down with the Cobb Area Council where people could participate on Zoom. And now less people are able to participate, but it's recorded, so it's on YouTube, so it's fine.
I agree. I've been working with Thomas. He's the main technician that comes. Because commonly, I used to do them by myself, and so it was very difficult getting hammered by the public and also try to do this and that. And, I mean, it just exacerbates the situation of what I have to do to report there or help or whatever the case may be. So it really, really did do a really good service. I do understand that there's been difficulties, but at the same time, in working and seeing what Thomas is dealing with, it has to do with the actual capacity of what each area has when it comes to that. It's not necessarily the, for example, in Lucerne, they have a really good system in place when it works. And then sometimes they just don't have enough. And it has to do with the actual internet service provider. It has nothing to do with the place or the equipment or anything like that. It's just that. It's fiber or whatever, and that's why we're working on getting, you know, fiber to Lake County.
And I really feel, and I appreciate all of the feedback. I really feel that I need to do a better job, at least as the chair of PEG, to reach out to MediaCom because we are kind of an extension of MediaCom in a way. PEGs are not just here in Lake County. They're nationwide, based on a demand to create that access for public education and government. And I feel that we have a ability to have conversations with MediaCom to help ensure that there's good reliability. I mean, it would be nice to speak for the whole community, but at the very least, we can work on the individual buildings itself. I know that for the homeless town hall that we were invited by Lakeport, which I forgot to mention that Lakeport also had worked with PEG, we, in working with Chief Rasmussen, had dropped a MediaCom connection because the internet was not working very well through what was already there at Sopory Theater. And we were able to have a pretty reliable stream. And so I think there's ways for PEG to work with MediaCom to try and enhance the services that are available at those town halls.
I think Stephen was going to say.
Mr. Carter?
I had a kind of a question where, because there's a lot of internet connection issues in certain areas, even if for the MACs or even other activities that CDD does, has PEG looked into the mobile Starlink that you can use at these events and would have 300 megabytes down, good internet, and could potentially even rent it out to certain things like CDD where they have their areas that are very remote? Possibility?
We had not thought of that. I know that I was just having a discussion with Sam Houston earlier today about the mobile Starlink, but definitely something to look into. I think first and foremost, I would start with MediaCom, just because, again, we are somewhat of an extension of MediaCom and making sure to see what's possible before expanding out further. Anything else before I open it up for public?
Just, I agree with the MediaCom conversation. This is, you know, there are a lot of grants and opportunities out there for connectivity. We're not asking to connect the whole community up, just these specific areas to spread the word. So I think that's a great conversation to start there.
All right.
It's a very good cover. They have a very good backup, too. So like, they're like, we can't, as of right now, you know, livestream, but it'll be on Zoom. Or on Zoom, it'll be on YouTube, so you can look from there.
Yeah, and I know that we definitely hit that wall hard with the general plan conversations, especially in the new buildings that we went to that we've never really had the experience of being there. It was kind of an unknown, and I think the majority of them went without the Zoom access and things like that. So it's, we need to work on that reliability. I'm going to open it up for public comment. We have Betsy Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Thank you so much. Now, I really can't argue with any of the great improvements that have been made. And certainly Supervisor Spatier knows that I am a wholeheartedly supportive of the project that he proposed to KPFZ last Thursday evening. Looking forward to it. I've been in favor of creating a radio and television partnership with the PEG TV providers since 2010. On the other hand, I have to explain to you that in no way are these meetings adequate to provide participation, real-time, live participation in the meetings through the remote virtual software programs. We could watch something. We can sometimes try and raise our hands. We're not allowed to use the chat window, which would be a way of informing the broadcasters of broadcasting difficulties. You know, there are certainly levels of Zoom, software packages that can be purchased that are very highly sensitive to even HIPAA restrictions. And I would encourage you to consider that these are not tools that can be used by disabled people. And that you have to include those people, like me, who have good contributions to make but cannot use the tools that you have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I do know that we did recently switch over to what we had intended to use, which was the webinar Zoom, which is what we use here currently in the chamber as well, where it does have those restrictions. But maybe we can play around with the exact restrictions because I think there might be some play there. Phone 6205?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, thank you so much. This is Bart Levinson. I wanted to thank Supervisor Pisca for her comment about Cobb Area Council. That's been my experience as well, that before PEG was handling the meetings, we could call in and listen and participate in a live way with the meetings. And that's been true for all of the MAC meetings. And so from a consumer point of view, a citizen point of view, I'm not sure that the supervisors are aware of, this is an enormous change since PEG took over. And it isn't working yet. I know it can, but it isn't yet. And so the disability access, the citizen access, the ability to interact, and these are all our rights to do. They need to be also in place. And my request would be that you have somebody in PEG who's monitoring the meetings, who can get feedback from somebody like Betsy Khan about what is or is not working. Because when you are running a meeting and it isn't, it isn't, we can't hear it, or we hear it and then it's cut off. We really need to be able to inform you so that that can be fixed. So the MACs were doing better handling their own Zoom than the PEG has been doing handling it for them from a consumer, public point of view. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And that is all for public comment at this moment in time. And I do know that it is not perfect. I know that there are issues, sometimes technical issues within Zoom, sometimes technical issues within hardware. I'd love to say it's a simple setup, but it's not necessarily a simple setup. And we're trying our best, and I want honest feedback from the supervisors so that we can make sure to not utilize funding if it's not necessary to use those funds, if it's not working for you. So please reach out anytime that you feel that it's not going in the direction that you wish for it to go. I know that I try often to be with PEG during these meetings, if I can, so that I can help facilitate some support to Thomas DeWalt. But I know that we are striving to make things better, hence the request that I'm going to make to see what we can do to upgrade some of these town hall centers so that it can make it that much easier and much more reliable. If you would like to make a public comment, you are absolutely a public member. If I'm allowed to.
Having been the architect of that system, I just need to let everyone know that we, it's not the equipment that ends up being the problem. The problem ends up being the various service providers. Cobb Area Council had three different service providers that they were working in between. That was AT&amp;T, another AT&amp;T, and they were also using Verizon, and they were also using, there was another service provider. All of them were, and they were having problems. If we, if you don't have a minimum of input that you can, that you can use with broadband service, it doesn't matter what service you're going to try to stream. It doesn't work. And what happens is, in our situation, if we do have an interruption in service, yes, we look bad. And so the best thing we can do is, if that starts to happen, if there's an interruption, is to record the meeting and provide it afterwards so that it's not a frustrating experience for the end users or the community. And there is a successful reproduction of that event. So I just needed to say that it's not PEG's service. It is the internet service provider, and there are many. And all have had challenges. So I just needed to say that because I know that PEG, I know that Supervisor Spatier have put in a lot of work into this. I know I've put in a lot of work into it. And so it just, there needs to be some clarification.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Okay, let's go and finish this up with phone 6205, if you could be brief.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Well, it's become clear to me recently that this is a disability issue as well. I have become disabled. I've become homebound. And I participate civically, and I want to continue to do that. And it isn't just an internet issue. There is something going on where the town halls could operate their own Zoom by themselves, and it worked better before PEG than it is working now. So there is something about, whether it's a competition of the PEG equipment using more juice or whatever it is. What needs to be fixed is to correct, maintain, and ensure public access and disability access to these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and that is absolutely our goal. Okay.
The town halls in my district didn't do their own Zooms, so I just wanted to note that.
So that, we're going to close public comment. If there's any final comments from board members, I'm done with the report. And I will be coming back with a contract that I'll work with our county council to make sure that it's ready for you guys by, before mid-June, early June, or something like that, is I think the plan. All right, let's go ahead and move on to calendars. Who's ready to start? Vice Chair.
Okay, well, so I got RCRC tomorrow, executive meeting. Let's see, Thursday, I have a meeting with, I think that's Caltrans. Yes, Caltrans in chief or Commander Fanzler. Let's see, LCRA, right? That's in Clear Lake this time? Is that, is that Clear Lake? Yep. All right, just making sure, because sometimes I'm at the wrong spot.
Oh, yeah, it's Clear Lake.
All right, and I think Friday, I don't think I have, I think I have something on there, but it has to do with highways, Highway 20, and it's, it's not a Caltrans, but I think it's a constituent that wants to talk about the highways. I just went off of, there you go, sorry. And then, let's see, Monday, well, we're not meeting next week, so Monday I don't have anything on the calendar, or Tuesday. And I probably will take advantage of that. Wednesday, the first, East Region Town Hall. Thursday, the second. Wednesday, the first, East Region Town Hall, Thursday, the second, FRRCC, Federal Advisory Committee for EPA. Then, let's see, next week, the week after, on the sixth, we have a meeting with the CAO, and then there's the Silver Foundation. They're holding the Lake County Senior Summit. That's going to be at Twin Pine Casino and Hotel, but it's the, not the recreation room, but the, what are they called?
Event Center.
Yeah, yes, the center. So it'll be there, Event Center, sorry. And then back here on the seventh, for the Board of Supervisors meeting.
Is that the Monday?
Yeah, it's Monday, the sixth. I have nine, but that's just so I get there on time. I think it's at like 11:00 or something like that, but...
Better to be early than late. Supervisor Pisca?
I have a meeting with constituents in the morning, and then I have to go to Ukiah for the NCO board meeting tomorrow, and then Thursday, I have the Soda Bay Corridor wrap-up meeting. I'm going to go to the Victims' Rights Barbecue, and then I'll go to Clear Lake for the rec agency. And then Friday, I have a couple things in the morning. Hopefully I can do both. The Zona Benefit Meeting, and then the CDBG Micro Enterprise Program Networking Event. On Monday, I think I'm having coffee with a constituent, because I think CAO Parker will be unavailable, hopefully. And then I have some medical, family medical things to do for a couple of days next week, so I will be unavailable until Thursday, and then Thursday and Friday, I have the biomass symposium, both days. Thursday, I will be in Potter Valley, and Friday, the third, I will be in Hopland, and then I don't think I'm going to go to the Silver Foundation. I'll be catching up on Monday, the sixth, and then back for the seventh.
All right, finish up today. Pretty open this week. Got a constituent meeting tomorrow afternoon, and then roll right into next week. Kind of open at this point till we come back on the seventh there. Earth Day just went through. Obviously, a bunch of Earth Day events just happened. I did attend the ravioli feed this weekend. It was well-attended, obviously. We had representation from all of our Senator Assembly and Congressman, so obviously they made some announcements of, you know, continuing to support Lake County as they moved through and keep an eye on us. So good support there, and I thought it was good. So other than that, that's what I got.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention briefly, I was privileged to participate in jury service last week. I know many people don't view that as a privilege, but it is. It's a responsibility, and ended up seated on a jury. I've only been seated twice in the last 50 years, so although I've been called to serve many times, I haven't been seated on a jury before, and it was a very informative process. It gives me fresh faith that the jury system is important, that it does work, that it is critical to our system of justice, and I want to do a shout-out to everyone on the fourth floor, everyone from the judge and the bailiffs and the jury commissioners and the attorneys and support staff who work so hard to keep the courts running. It is not always a fun place to be, whether you're a defendant or a juror or someone else who is justice-involved, but it is such a critical process. And this board has been front and center in bringing in a new public defender and building a new office and assisting the defense bar do its job, and anyway, I'm just grateful for the opportunity. That said, this week, I've already managed to blow off a Lakeport Navigation Center meeting, and I apologize to those who were on that Zoom on Monday. Last night, however, we had a great turnout. We had the Lakeport Area Plan Update kickoff meeting here in the board chambers, and we also brought in the Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council for a special meeting so that they could all be here, participate without violating the Brown Act, have good Internet, and I'm told that we had not only really good turnout, but we had good Internet, too. So for those who are trying to tune in to that Lakeport Area Plan Update, we actually had video, and that was pretty cool. Tomorrow, Lakeport Emergency Shelter Zoom at 9:00, just checking how things are going. Chair Sabatier, I do want to talk with you about first five coverage, if possible, and I have a question for the board, just because it's on the calendar. I know former Supervisor Scott used to attend IHSS advisory, but I don't see it on the formal list of committee assignments for the board. So I know that they're meeting tomorrow, I believe, in Lower Lake at 3:30, but I'm not aware of any board support at this point. So it's going to be their first meeting where they've had a quorum in a long, long time, and I just want to make sure that they're supported some way, somehow. And I think that's about all I got at this point.
Thank you very much. Tomorrow, starting off with Lakeport Shelter Update, then the Chiefs' Meetings, and I need to figure out if that's in Middletown or if it's in the Oaks. It was in Clear Lake last time.
Lucerne.
Or Lucerne.
Where are Chiefs?
It was going in one direction, so...
Yeah, I'm meeting with Chief Ciancio at the Lucerne Station after the...
Okay, so that's where that will be. Then I have a Lake County Performance Review for the COC, and I will be taking the alternate position for first five, if you still need me to be there, and then going to the Lake County Fire Protection District Meeting occurring later on that afternoon. Starting Thursday off, we'll see if I can go to Judge's Breakfast. Then I have a Hope Rising Governing Board Meeting, and then I have about three meetings all overlapping, or looks like two. One of them is the, the one I'll most likely go to, is our Quarterly Jail Medical Review. I find that to be very important, especially in the position on the Administration of Justice Committee for CSAC. Then, on Friday, I will be going to the Raising of the Flag over in Austin Park, where we get to watch all the children hold on to a giant flag before it goes flying high, and that is always up between typically before Memorial Day and then after Veterans Day is when it comes down. Later on, having a discussion with many different districts and jurisdictions about developer fees. And then on the 27th, I'll be waking up bright and early for the Clear Lake Cleanup Day. That'll be at 7:30 in the morning at Austin Beach, and then once you have all of your implements and are ready to go after you've signed up and probably signed some waivers, then you can go to your own little neighborhoods or your own little area that you wanted to clean up for the day, and that's always a good day when we get a cleaner community. I'm meeting with some constituents on Monday, the 29th, and having my NACO Health Committee on the first, and I'm going to be having a check-in with what's going on with Knott's Gardens on the second, and I'm just going to leave it at that for now. There's still a bunch of other stuff, but I'd have to click on every single one of them. I want to talk real quick about the CSAC Conference I went to. Number one, I know I spoke to a lot of people who were really happy about the committee meeting that Supervisor Pisca is the vice chair in. I only know that it's agriculture and energy and other things?
Energy, natural resources.
Energy and natural resources. They stated how much Lake County was being highlighted because of all the work that is happening in Lake County. Just want to thank my colleague for all the work she's doing, because that's highlighting some of her efforts that she's been working on for the past few years, and looking forward to the continued success of that position in that committee. We had an interesting committee of the Administration of Justice to talk about retail theft, and we had the DA from Sacramento, as well as the Chief Public Defender from Yolo County, and it was a very balanced and very interesting conversation about what is working and what is not working, and very polar opposite perspectives of what is working and what is not working, depending on who you spoke to. And so it was a very interesting conversation, and I think it made more people walk away with thought-provoking thoughts rather than entrenching themselves further into their position and what they believe is the issue. Overall, during the Board of Directors Meeting, I did vote on the behalf of Lake County on two things. One of them, two of them are measures that will be on the ballot in November. One of them is ACA 1, which is a bill that was passed by Assembly Member Aguirre Curry, which lowers the threshold for special taxes from 2/3 to 55%, matching what schools have to go through, and I believe it's also for specific criteria of projects and not just any special tax. So please be on the lookout for that. There was a CSAC support for that measure, and then another one is ACA 13, which if there's ever a measure that says we want to increase it from 2/3 to 80% in order to pass, well, then that measure will require 80% vote as well if you want to increase the threshold for special taxes, which I thought was logical, and that was supported as well by the CSAC group. There's another one that we didn't talk about and didn't vote on yet. It's still being worked on, and it's one that's definitely something we should all be paying attention to. I believe it's supposed to be ACA 3, but I could be wrong. It's one that would eliminate a whole lot of local and state taxes that have been recently approved, unless they were done before January 1st, 2022, unless they have Citizen Oversight Committee, unless they received the 2/3, and unless they have a sunset clause. This has the potential to eliminate a lot of taxes that have been helping resolve some of the issues from our lack of resources, and so it's definitely one to pay attention to, one that will have greater impact to different communities depending on the timeline and the type of taxes that they have passed in the near past. So just something to be on the lookout for, and there's a whole bunch of other bills as well that seems to be making their way, which doesn't quite make sense within the atmosphere of such a huge deficit that our state is in, where it might put local jurisdictions at a greater inability to serve their communities the way that they should be served. I think that's all I have for my comments, and unless there's anything else anyone wished to add, I believe that is our last item.
And Jessica, maybe I missed this, but National Denim Day is Wednesday?
Friday.
Wednesday, the 24th.
Oh, I got it.
The barbecue is Friday, I think, right? Or something.
Yeah, Denim Day is Wednesday, the 24th.
The 24th. I know a lot of businesses, obviously, are
Thank you.
taking participation in that and everyone else, but that brings a lot of awareness.
Wear your denim.
Yep.
Yeah, I had it for Friday. Thanks.
All right, and that is it for all of our open session items, and we've already concluded our close, so thank you very much for joining us and hanging in there. Have yourself a wonderful evening.